Welcome, everybody, to the June 28, 2023. Man, time's flying. City V. Dyna Planning Commission meeting. On behalf of the entire Planning Commission, we are grateful you are here today. It is your curiosity, your participation, and your feedback that is vital to this process as we navigate change together here in Edina. So thank you for being here. Before we begin, want to provide some context in a couple areas, a little bit about this process, who the Planning Commission is, where we fit into the puzzle of change in the city. And secondly, just the agenda, so what you can expect tonight. So if you don't know, the Planning Commission is a quasi-judicial body that is made up of residents such as yourselves, volunteer their time on matters related to land use. So we are appointed by the City Council, and we serve primarily as gatekeepers for change, that legacy of development and redevelopment in Edina. We do a couple things. We make laws, but more often, we interpret them. So if you've heard of the term comprehensive plan, that is an overarching, legal, binding, guiding document for change in Edina. It also helps preserve what keeps Edina what it is, as well as offers up opportunity to enhance the areas that Edina could improve upon in the future. The Planning Commission is the body every 10 years for about a three-year process that updates that plan, which is heavily influenced by your feedback as residents. That is the time for residents to have the highest impact on change that you see in Edina. It's these updates to the comprehensive plan, as well as small area plans or district plans, which you'll hear about tonight, one being the Cahill District Plan. That's where you have the highest opportunity for change. It's these overarching kind of collective vision-based documents for places in the city that we hold special. In between that, we serve bimonthly for meetings such as these for more of that reactive change, things we have to interpret that come up in between the comprehensive plan or that don't jibe with it. And we have three public hearings tonight, and we'll get into the process of those, too. I've served on this for about seven years, so I can say with high confidence, for the City of Edina, you are served very well by my colleagues up here. This group has a dynamic range of backgrounds, both personally and professionally, expertise and experience across the board, very calculated, methodical, and thoughtful in their approach. So you should feel thankful and served well by this group. As for what to expect tonight, the agenda is, like most meetings, we'll kick off with an approval of the minutes, as well as the agenda. Then we'll get into the community comment period, which is your opportunity to speak about something not on the agenda tonight. After that is the public hearings, and that's where it's your opportunity to speak about matters that are on tonight's agenda. And we'll go through the process of that when we get closer to it. But if you happen to be tuning in remotely, and you want to get ready for that, please call the following number, 786-496-5601, and enter conference PIN 6960282. And then when you want to get in the queue to speak, you push *1, and then we'll give you further instructions. After that, we'll have chair member comments and staff comments, and then we'll adjourn. One thing to note, we've talked about public feedback. It's important for you to know that all feedback that has been submitted has made its way to us and has been reviewed and considered before tonight's meeting. And with that, we'll kick off. So call the order. Roll call.
Commissioner Felton.
Here.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Padilla.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner who?
Here.
Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Bornstein.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here.
Next, we have the approval of tonight's meeting agenda. Welcome, a motion or any proposed modifications?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have the approval of the prior meeting's minutes, which is from June 14, 2023. Do we have any proposed modifications or motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. So next is that part we touched on before, the community comment period. So this is opportunity for any resident who's here in person that wants to speak on a matter not on tonight's agenda. You have three minutes to do so. Come up to one of the podiums, state your full name and address. The green light signals you can start. Amber means you have 30 seconds left, and red means your time's up, and we'll let you know to wrap it up. Anyone here for community comment? All right, we got one.
Yes, you do.
Thank you.
My name, Janie Weston, 6136 Brookview Avenue. And can we have the camera on this? Okay. I'm here to talk about something that our tree ordinance is completely lacking, and that is protection of the trees that are on the other side of the property line from a tear-down, complete tear-down property. As we all should know, trees that have the trunk on one side of the property line, up to half of their roots cross the property line. Okay. You can see this. Okay. This property is on Oaklawn Avenue, a few houses north of 62nd Street. And the concern here is this oak tree on the neighboring property to the north, this one on the property to the east, and a huge one here that is, I'll call the General Sherman oak tree of my neighborhood. There's another view of the one to the north. You can see where the sand and dirt pile is. It goes all the way up to the fence line, especially for this tree, too close to this one where the other oak tree is here. Another view. And here's General Sherman, I'll call it. This is in my neighbor's yard to the north. Its roots go underneath my yard. It goes under the two properties to the west on the other side of the fence, and its canopy reaches far and wide. This tree is 11 feet, 2 inches in girth at 4 and 1/2 feet high. Huge. This was here before the oldest house in the city, which is on this piece of property, the Whitbeck property. That house was built in 1866. This tree, I am estimating at 300 to 350 years old. We don't want to see these oak trees go away because of how this builder, TJB Homes, is allowed to pile dirt on top of where their roots go. It suffocates the roots, it denies them of water, and we're in the third year of a drought. Thank goodness, we got rain last weekend. This tree is the most vulnerable to die. Next will be this one, and then General Sherman. What I would like to see done to not allow this is, there is, oh, let me also mention, there's Minnesota State Statute, Section 561 dash, or Point 04, discusses damaging or cutting trees on neighboring property. It is against the law to do that by this Minnesota statute. Our zoning code does not enforce this. It is a problem. So what I would like to see added or changed to new tear-down building code, something that you can get started, is that a builder will not be allowed to leave dirt on an excavation site within at least 30 feet of neighboring property lines, because it will kill their trees. And these three trees will cost thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars to replace, and they are irreplaceable. So that's my request. I'll be back. I'm doing a neighborhood tree survey in my area as to tear-downs and what tree loss that we have in my immediate neighborhood. And I'll be back with those results next time I'm in front of you, I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question, Ms. Weston? So I saw you present on this last week at the City Council meeting.
Yes.
And I was wondering at that time, has there, has an arborist come out and confirmed the concerns?
Luther Overholt came and looked at it. He advised Mrs. Whitbeck that there is nothing that the city can do at this point. Once that hole is dug, and at that time, when Luther stopped by, they had the, I don't know if they even had the footings poured, but it was all open from lot line to lot line on both as a side lot lines. So there was no way to remove that dirt pile. And I understand the reason why builders like to have it left there. It's less cost. They don't have to have the dirt hauled away. They don't have to have it hauled back. It's convenient to then backfill. And we were hoping to see this property get backfilled today. The walls are poured, but that didn't happen. Hopefully, it'll happen tomorrow. But if a tree is suffocated like this, it could take longer than one year for it to die, too. So anything else?
That was it. I just, for, just out of curiosity, because I, you know, as we talk about that going forward in the future, right?
Yeah.
I think about a time element and stuff that would be potentially added to that in terms of, like, how long could you have a dirt pile there, right? A day isn't going to kill a tree, and, you know, so on and so forth, and anything else.
Yeah.
But yeah, so like I said, I was interested, because I saw you present on it last week, so I thought I'd ask.
In addition to the city arborist, Mrs. Whitbeck also consulted with the tree expert at the Minnesota Landscape Arboretum. And the roots actually extend further out than the canopy.
Right.
For your information.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, and I guess anyone tuning in, some context, too, that might be helpful, as the city underwent an update to the tree ordinance that the Planning Commission was a part of, that made some sweeping changes that were, in some ways, attempting to really protect heritage trees. So I encourage people to look that up online, look into it. There's some backing, you know, where size of tree is a function, and protection is a function of the tree's diameter, trunk diameter, et cetera. But we will take that upon us and, you know, work with the planning department, as well as the arborists, to see if there's anything else we could consider and adopt into a change to that ordinance. Again, it just got approved, so nothing's perfect, and we're trying things out, so thank you. Do we have anyone else who's here for community comment? Well, no one else is rushing up there, so we will close community comment for the evening. Thank you. All right, next, we have our public hearing. So as I mentioned, we have three tonight. The function of a, or the format of a public hearing, just so you understand, this is different with a district area plan, but for other proposals, applicant or developer, formal applications are made, and then a 60-day window is triggered, and this is a part of the process that allows the residents to have formal feedback. And so what happens is the staff will come and present based off of the findings of their staff report, will pose some questions, then the applicant will have a chance to have their own presentation. We'll have further questions and conversation. Then we'll open it to a public hearing, which is your opportunity to speak about the matter. And again, you have three minutes to do so. We'll close that, and then it's up to the Planning Commission to deliberate and make a recommendation, ultimately, in all these cases, that will go to the City Council for final executive decision. So tonight, we have the Cahill District Area Plan. Welcome, Addison Lewis and team. Please introduce everyone, familiar faces up there. Maybe not to everyone, but thank you all for coming.
Thanks for your time this evening. My name is David Alkire. I'm the chair of the Cahill District Area Plan Group. I'll just start off with a picture of our team. This is a group of Edina residents who've been working diligently for more than a year. The group was formed, I believe, in January of 2022, following an introductory community workshop that we had in November of 2021. So it's a process that's been going on for quite some time, and the first thing that I want to do tonight is to thank the Edina residents who participated on the working group. Also, on behalf of the working group, I'd like to thank Addison Lewis and Chris Hocker, Edina staff that supported us, as well as Hyla Mays and her team from Bolden and Mink. I want to start off by just giving a brief overview of the project, of what you're going to see about the project tonight. First and foremost, the plan recognizes the district's role as a key employment center for the city, leveraging its proximity to a highly educated workforce, major highways, and MSP. It does this in two ways. First, it preserves the industrial core of the district, acknowledging the importance of the district to the city's financial strength and financial diversification. Secondly, the plan guides for high employment office on the eastern side of the district by Highway 100, and in the southwest corner of the district near 494 and the Bloomington border. But Cahill is not all big business, though. The plan identifies three pedestrian-scale development locations in the district to support growth, community engagement, and quality of life in our city. First, the plan creates a new neighborhood mixed-use area in the northeast corner of the district by 70th Street and Highway 100. Secondly, it, the plan refines the existing business node in the southeast corner of the district. And thirdly, it affirms, I guess you'd say, the existing 70th and Cahill Small Area Plan that was done a number of years ago. On the transportation front, the plan recommends new connections to and through the district for all, trucks, transit, cars, bikes, and pedestrians. And importantly, the plan advances numerous climate action plan goals. An office and industrial employment center supports good jobs close to home for fewer vehicle miles traveled. The plan identifies opportunities for higher-density residential and commercial development. The plan recommends upgrades to transit infrastructure to encourage ridership. And guided by the city's living streets policy, the plan recommends multimodal roadway improvements that, in combination with the planned Three Rivers CP Trail project, will enhance the bike and pedestrian infrastructure in the district. Finally, the Cahill Plan illuminates water management challenges in the district and provides a roadmap for progress. Our working group has put a lot of effort into creating this new vision for the Cahill District, and we're excited to share it with you this evening. Addison Lewis will get us started on the details of the plan.
Thank you, David. Again, Addison Lewis, Community Development Coordinator on staff here with the City of Edina. I'm going to start out just by giving kind of a brief overview of the Cahill District and talk a little bit about our planning process. So the image on the right here shows you the limits of the Cahill District that were looked at. So it's generally bound by West 70th Street to the north, Cahill Road to the west, Highway 100 to the east, and the city boundary to the city of Bloomington to the south. This is a really important area economically for the city. There's over 250 businesses in this area, and anywhere from 4,000 to 7,000 employees. And it's businesses from every sector, including technology, healthcare, robotics, engineering, fitness, education, food, and professional services, you name it, it's probably here. This area is Edina's primary industrial park within the city. Just over 2% of all land in the city is guided for industrial use. It was developed in the '60s, '70s, and '80s. Prior to that, it was farmland and low-lying wetlands. But when it was developed, it was intended to be an industrial park, and so as such, it was really designed to kind of keep people out and discourage through traffic. So you'll see that there's a lot of dead-end streets. It is really lacking in terms of pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. But since it was originally developed, there have been changes in industrial parks and a lot of turnover in the types of uses towards more community-serving uses, things that are bringing people into the district more than it did previously. So that's things like the brewery, places of worship, schools, daycare facilities, fitness gyms, sports training, et cetera. The city has also seen some developer interest in doing multifamily residential in areas where it's not currently zoned and guided for. And so as such, this is an area that was identified in Edina's two previous comprehensive plans as an area warranting some additional study. And so in 2021, it was placed on the Planning Commission's 2021 Work Plan, and a 12-member working group was appointed to kind of lead the planning process and work with our consultant team. The working group is ultimately accountable to the Planning Commission, and then the Planning Commission makes the recommendation on the plan to the City Council, who ultimately adopts the plan. And the intent is that this plan will guide future land use, transportation, and infrastructure investment decisions for at least the next decade. Our process spanned over 18 months. We had over 13 meetings as a working group. There was also a pretty extensive public engagement process. That included three community workshops that were all well-attended. We held five focus group meetings with key property and business owners. We distributed an online survey to 165 businesses, for which we received 34 responses, and we held two developer roundtable sessions to get feedback from the development community. We also gathered feedback online through Better Together Edina. We also coordinated with other agency stakeholders for this area, so that includes Nine Mile Creek, Watershed District, CP Railway, Exile Energy, Metro Transit, City of Bloomington, and Edina Public Schools. And through that engagement, we heard a lot about the strengths of the district, and overwhelmingly, the number-one strength is just the location within the metro and its great freeway access. This is really important for employers and the types of businesses that are here. There are three access points to Highway 100 and 494. We're 10 minutes from MSP Airport and very close to downtown Minneapolis as well. So the location was really identified as a major strength of the area. Also, the heavy-duty roadway network, this is, all the streets in here are part of the 10-ton roadway network, so that allows for heavier trucks to pass through the area. The industrial zoning was also mentioned, which just allows for a lot of flexibility. There are uses that are allowed to operate in this part of Edina that are not allowed elsewhere. Also, the proximity to convenience retail, restaurants, childcare. And then there's also been significant investments by most property owners in the maintenance, interior, and exterior improvements of the buildings in the district. We also heard about a number of challenges. So number one being flooding and stormwater issues. I mentioned that this area used to be low-lying wetlands. We also have Nine Mile Creek that runs through here, so a majority of the district is within a flood plain, and that can be challenging for redevelopment and expansion of the existing uses there. We also talked about circulation within the district, how it's very disconnected and lacking pedestrian-bike infrastructure, also a lack of public spaces, as most of the land is privately owned. There's also potential conflicts between residential retail uses with industrial. We heard a little bit of some of those, you know, as you have heavy trucks coming through the area, that can be an issue with on-street parking and, you know, kids riding bikes through the area, things like that. Also, some properties that have seen minimal investment, and that needs some updating as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over here to Hyla to talk about how the working group kind of considered these strengths and weaknesses, and how it got exemplified throughout the plan.
Thank you, Addison. I'll shuffle people around here, and you'll hear again from Addison before the end as we complete this discussion of the plan content and talk about next steps and transition to discussion. Again, my name is Hyla Mays. I'm with Bolden and Mink, also joined by my colleague Mike here. We were delighted to be able to work on this plan and delighted to work with this very thoughtful group who went through a very deliberative process to get to those recommendations you see here before you today. The work group had a lot of considerations on their plate, and I can say, we entered the process when that had already started in going through the process of discussing what's important, what needs to be held on to, what can change, and what are the opportunities here to seize on to. Again, as mentioned earlier by Addison, protecting existing businesses, industrial, was identified early on and held on to throughout the process. It's your only industrial park. It was built for a purpose. It serves an important purpose. That's changed over time, but at the same time, there's embodied value and value to the community in keeping that. Creating a strong public realm was also surfaced. This was not an initial value of the park. It was designed very functionally, very simply, and definitely aimed at mainly cars and auto, trucks. We made a lot of decisions around that were, including additional resources that were brought in through the Henry County grant to provide additional public realm guidance to make this more attractive and livable for the people who live, work, and play in the area. We also talked about the, one of the more issues that sparked a lot more discussion was new housing, whether that is a good fit here, where it belongs, and what is the balance between that and other uses. And of course, the anticipated benefits of growth and change in here, including opportunity cost to changes. Because it's Edina, we also said, how can this be a leading presence? This is not just another industrial park. This is not just another place to have businesses and residents. It's a place to do something new. It's a place to create ideas, create value, and for entrepreneurs to think and develop what's next. So the city can't mandate that. The city can allow that and enable that and support that. Early on in the process, also, the working group landed on three main development principles here, which kind of anchor and guide the rest of the discussion, and certainly, the recommendations coming out of this. The first was resilient and connected systems. This area, as Addison mentioned, was designed to be disconnected on purpose. In some ways, protecting different uses and buffering is not a bad thing. At the same time, we heard strongly, can people safely walk, bike, and travel while still making them for cars, trucks, and other vehicles? Regional economic value, also mentioned. This is a tax base. This is a jobs base. This is a center for employment, for investment, and for property value. How is it maintained and enhanced? And community serving and building. One of the earliest things we heard, and consistently, is this place has neighbors. It has residents that live nearby. How is this a better neighbor? How is this a place where there's assets? There already are some, and more assets to bring in, that can provide new amenities and new ways to use this space? I won't go into detail of the many different iterations of conversation we had here in terms of how this has value, but just suffice to say, there are many different opportunities, there's limited space. And so a lot of the discussion started with thinking about the opportunities, but then thinking, how do those land, and how are they done logically, safely, and compatibly with one another? Going to talk a little bit about the constraints of this area. Addison touched on these earlier, but just to highlight, because we use a lot of these as parameters to say, what's possible here, and what are the work that needs to happen here for change to happen? This is, like many industrial parks of its era, aging building stock, not necessarily top-of-line, working very functionally, serving the needs, but again, in some ways, becoming obsolete. There's a lot of decision points around that in terms of, do you hold it what it is? It's serving a purpose? It's fully tenanted? Or do you allow it to evolve to the next level? Again, that decision point being very critical here and part of the decision. Internal circulation, or lack thereof. This was intentionally cut off, and so a discussion about how we can make new connections happen and do that in a way that safely and excessively. Sewer capacity. This was a discussion, I'm glad we have someone here from Public Works who can answer questions on this, because this overlaps with some larger Public Works decisions around investments in sewer capacity, which is constrained here, and whether, what capacity should be expanded to, to allow and accommodate future growth, not just near-term, but for long-term. With these major investments, that's a critical decision. And public realm. Again, no formal public gathering spaces, very limited multimodal facilities, definitely lots of room for improvement, but needing more guidance as to where, how, when, and what. And also mentioned flooding and stormwater. We have some more discussion about that a little bit later, but highlighting that, what that means, and in terms of just, not just the individual property owner constraints, but how this plan can help set a roadmap for some broader amenity-rich solutions that look across property lines and look for better solutions. look across property lines and look for better solutions going forward. On that last topic, I wanted to talk about stormwater management a bit more. As mentioned earlier, and you'll probably hear it again, this was a wetlands, and that's not an accident. Those areas were often left out of the residential areas. No one built a house. So in many of our urban areas, if you have a large open area, it was a gravel pit, it was a wetland, it was some other use. It was redeveloped, it was drained, as the area east of Highway 100 was. But it also meant that there's a system, I would say a deficit, in terms of how this area served. Thinking about aligning investments and making key decisions around that is key to not just the development here, but the future of the area in general. There are opportunities to develop here, but because of the underlying systems, it is constrained. We do not, we cannot have underground parking without significant amendment. There is a need to elevate buildings. This means that when you have projects coming through here, this will be a consideration on each individual case, and looking at solutions that also provide amenity value and don't just meet the minimum requirements is a way to elevate a project. I won't go into the details here, but we had a lot of iterations and discussions about what that actually means in practice. And again, it's not just about the utility function, but also about green space, public realm, and how places can be more greener and sustainable over time. With some different solutions that you may have explored in other areas, there's certainly a lot of inspiration pieces. Again, though this is a market-driven, opportunity-driven plan, we're hopeful that the plan can provide guidance for those unique opportunities going forward. As these constraints were coming to focus, as the goals were being developed by the plan, we started vetting as a group, with the working group, the different scenarios and different possibilities out here. And it was not an easy discussion, and really a very important one, to think about, there's a lot of different ways to change and a lot of different goals to balance for this limited space. The organizing framework, which you see here, provided sort of the anchoring potential for the plan going forward. As mentioned earlier, a lot of focus ended up being on, how is the industrial core used effectively? A lot of it does feel very dated at this point, but at the same time, there are reasons to have some uses separated. As this plan came to focus, though, there's opportunities to mix uses thoughtfully and to create unique places with walkable, and I would say even urban appeal for people in the area. The neighborhood node and the business node pictured here are indeed sort of activity centers and places that can attract different uses, residential, commercial, mixed use, and provide amenity to not just the residents, but also the businesses here in the area. Interestingly enough, we were looking at the research for here, we looked at some work that Brookings Institution's doing to identify activity centers. These actually show up, because if you look about the radius from the area, in terms of businesses that people can walk to, travel to, and use for lunch, use for errands, they're here. Are they ideal? They need improvement. That's the point of the plan. But there's definitely some bones to this in some ways this was developed that is thoughtful. The different iterations of the scenarios build on that, with different ways of thinking about how transition can happen. How do you bring new uses? How do you bring transitions into this district while still maintaining a lot of the value and keeping that moving forward? You see three, four scenarios here. The open-for-business scenario, scenario A, was a selected scenario. As mentioned earlier, this is the one that is most jobs-intensive and most focused on preservation of the industrial core, while allowing some transitions, which David mentioned earlier, to add value. Zooming in a little bit on that selected alternative, and to go quickly through this to make sure there's room for discussion. The nodes mentioned earlier provide an anchoring framework, as well as these transitional zones. This schematic you see before you, the purple shows potential for infill and for change in certain key areas around nodes, around the highway, and other places that were identified in the plan as currently somewhat underdeveloped, underutilized. One key factor here is the large parking lots of yore, the parking lots that made sense in the 60s and 70s, feel overbuilt now, and opportunities for infill, repurposing of that land and infilling spaces between buildings, in addition to redevelopment, provide some exciting and interesting opportunities. Developers ourselves, when we talked to them, highlighted those and certainly said that they were interested in finding ways to do that. Because of the high value of this area, our, the input we received did focus on how is more value created here? How is there more development? How is this space more efficiently used? So that was certainly part of the discussion as well. The business node, I will go through these quickly. Again, a lot of this detail is in the plan, but just to go quickly through what the different concepts are for the areas. The business node, close to the interstate, is employment-serving retailing uses with an orientation towards employment and perhaps some other uses for the surrounding residential The industrial core, as mentioned earlier, is a core area within the district that is industrial right now, but also allowing for office, some flex, and I hear you'll have an item later on that thinks about even retail in some areas, to think about what are the uses that are a good compatible mix for these things. Some of this is reinventing, reinvesting in buildings, some of which is already naturally, organically occurring. But this plan awful emphasizes a public realm that's enhanced, a space where the uses work together, and thinks about compatibility issues. The high-employment districts, the high-visibility ones, you can see by zooming by on the interstate and on highway, provide the most visible presence in the larger community, and certainly a lot of high-value properties there. We looked in the plan at different opportunities for infill here, and certainly definitely some opportunities for that, as well as maybe for some shared green infrastructure and stormwater solutions. And the neighborhood mixed-use node, this represents the, in this iteration, in this scenario, the place where residential is introduced in a way that it isn't fully there now. Right now, if you're familiar with the area, there are a few residential properties that have been built at different times. This plan makes that area whole in the sense of, they are part of a mixed-use residential community, not just little incursions into the larger industrial area, and certainly thinks of that as a place that can function well and with functioning services, and people who are present there 24/7. The public realm plan, as mentioned earlier, was effectively an add-on to this plan, which we're grateful for, because it provided a deeper dive in terms of some of the things that people care most about, which is, how does this place function as an experience for people traveling through here? With the trail, with the businesses, with the destinations in the area, how is it a more useful space for all the modes? The public realm plan in here, which is a separate section, complementing the main plan, looks at different components, including enhanced streetscape, gateways and wayfinding as people enter the district and leave, activity areas that are pedestrian-oriented and provide more amenities and more sense of place for people walking in the area, stormwater opportunities, as mentioned earlier, and a typology of streets and trails and networks, to think about how uses move through here multimodal, are safely separated but still accommodate all the different functions in the district. We also had discussions around the regional trail project, the transit and the other components. You'll see here an example from the, from the plan of multimodal connectivity network that shows the different typologies and different approaches to how the streets, trails and connections are made here. A few dotted lines also show where there could potentially be future connections, because as mentioned earlier, the network's very broken. It's not punching them all through, but definitely providing some more circulation that makes sense for people using this area. There's also cross-sections, including the ones you see, an example of what you see here, of different concepts for how these streets could be reimagined, as right now, if you've been through there, wide, open, and definitely mainly aimed at moving trucks. Different design features, however, could be, provide better pedestrian bike connectivity, accommodate on-street parking, and certainly, of course, still allow for the safe access to all businesses. At this point, I'm turning it over to Addison to wrap up.
Thanks, Hyla. So as was mentioned, the district, it's our intention that the district plan would get adopted as an amendment to our comprehensive plan. And so in order to do that, there are some changes that need to happen to the overall comprehensive plan documents, just to make it consistent with the district plan. So this is kind of just a housekeeping item to get it through the council process and make it consistent with the guidance that's in the district plan. So would be happy to answer any questions you guys have on that. And then just lastly here to wrap up, this is just kind of our plan review and approval schedule. So the draft plan was posted on Better Together for review and comment on May 17th. We sent out a notice to our adjacent community review jurisdictions. There's a list of other agencies that the Met Council gives us that we're required to notify anytime we're amending the comprehensive plan. So that's all of our adjacent municipalities, the county, MINDOT, the DNR, school districts, the watershed districts, things like that. So you'll notice you did get, we did receive a couple responses, one from the City of Bloomington, one from the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District. That was included in your packet as well. We held a work session with you all to kind of give you an overview of the plan on May 24th, and then here we are, June 28th, holding the public hearing at the Planning Commission meeting. July 17th is the last official day that those adjacent jurisdictions have until to submit comments. We did request them by, I think it was June 21st, to try to get them in front of you. So it's very common for some of these other jurisdictions to not respond if it's not relevant to them. So I don't anticipate we'll get any additional comments, but always a possibility. And then we'll be bringing it before the City Council for a public hearing on July 18th, with the City Council hopefully making a decision at the following meeting on August 2nd, and then getting the plan submitted to the Metropolitan Council August 3rd, and then the Metropolitan Council can take up to 60 days to review the plan. So with that, the action requested of you tonight is, we're looking for a recommendation that the City Council adopt the Cahill District Area Plan and associated comprehensive plan amendments, and authorize submission to the Metropolitan Council. So with that, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you all so much for coming here and all, all the work that went into this. Maybe before we open it to questions, you referenced the work session about a month ago. I think there was some feedback provided by the Planning Commission then. Just want to know if any of that was integrated or considered or worth kind of reiterating tonight?
Yeah, I think, you know, we, we talked about it as a group, and we tried to kind of reemphasize some of those points and take what you said and maybe try to respond to that here tonight. So hopefully you caught some of that. No changes have been made to the draft. You know, this draft has been posted publicly. We don't want to change it until we got any kind of formal direction from, from you all in the City Council, so.
Okay, yeah. Open it to questions here. Commissioner Strauss.
Yes, thank you. It's always fun when you've been connected with projects that have been literally for a couple of years, and the development of particularly the artwork, the graphics. I mean, I saw a lot of new stuff, which I knew, I assume is all, was generated as, as part of the process. And it's, it's always fun to see these things grow, and they keep getting better and clearer and more focused, and I think that's, to me, it's very apparent, the, from where you were 18 months ago, or you know, whatever to now. So, but I think this is something Hyla said about how this was originally envisioned and almost designed, I mean, especially the Cahill. Cahill Road was, you know, there's a single, what, crossing? I mean, outlet from the whole park between 70th and Bush Lake Road. I think, yeah, I think it just is that one where the big, the problem intersection is. But, so that the area was purposely kind of designed, it was meant to serve a specific need and, and not to be residential or whatever. Were the lots, so generally, you know, a city, a street, the right-of-way itself is, what, 10 some feet past the curb? I mean, does that exist, or was, or, I mean, is there public right-of-way off the curb? I mean, to allow for some of the infrastructure things like sidewalks and bus stops and, I mean, there's nothing that unique that would prevent that sort of infrastructure, sidewalks in particular? I mean, is it, my question clear?
Correct, yeah. I mean, Hyla's team at Bolton and Mink, they looked at, you know, the right-of-way and kind of analyzed what types of facilities could be added there, and in almost all cases, there's plenty of room for trails and sidewalks and things like that.
Yeah. And the reason there weren't sidewalks is because they just didn't envision this as everybody was in a truck or a car. I mean, they just didn't see that sort of need or use, and you know, things changed. So that's, that's why they weren't.
Correct. And I think it was intended to discourage people from wandering into the area, right? On, on foot or by bike.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. That's, that's what I had. Thank you.
Commissioner Bornstein. During our work session, you spoke about the value that having a place like this can bring for just diversifying the city's property tax base and otherwise, you know, sort of serving as a buffer against times when things change in the economy. I thought that was relevant at that time. Do you mind just kind of speaking to that point again?
Sure. I think first, I would just kind of emphasize again, this, this industrial area, only 2% of the city's land is guided for industrial. So there are uses that are here that really can't exist elsewhere in the city. So when you talk about kind of like diversifying the city's tax base, maybe when there's times where, you know, office and retail uses aren't doing as well, you know, but maybe the industrial is doing, is, is strong. So it's just really trying to protect that from, you know, encroachment from those other types of uses, because those industrial businesses, they can't go kind of to other parts of the city. So I don't know if there's anything else you guys want to say about that?
I would just say, I think, and you probably already stated this, was because of the way the tax structure works, if you have, don't have industrial, it does create a greater burden on your residential property owners to bear property taxes. And so, again, there are rises and falls in real estate, certainly, but a diversification is often, in investment terms, a smart choice. And in this case, this area has a disproportionate percentage of the, of the sales tax. Of course, we did not do an analysis about tax impacts citywide, that was beyond the scope of the plan, but that could be a future study or work if there's interest to think about the value that's brought by, by a diversification of uses in this area.
Still looking this way. Any comments? Questions?
Okay.
Any questions? Yeah.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, team, for doing such a great job working on this. I know this is a, was a giant monster to try and digest and come up with some recommendations for us. From my perspective, I have a bunch of questions, and I'll try to give the rest of my commissioners here time to kind of tackle different aspects of it. The way how I look at this, I was trying to figure out what's the best way to look at this, and I think to Commissioner Bornstein's point, you know, the Cahill District is a strategic area within the city that could be a good buffer against other economic impacts across the city. If housing prices go up and housing shortages kick in, maybe the manufacturing businesses might continue, which would keep our business afloat, et cetera. So I think from that perspective, I think it's a strategic area for us to maintain. So with that in mind, my focus has not necessarily been on residents, but more on business owners, and how could I maximize the utility for business owners, and not necessarily minimize the needs of residents, but maintain a certain level of service so that residents who move into that space could still enjoy it. So from that perspective is kind of how I, I looked at it. So my questions would be like around those areas. But in the beginning, I think you talked about agencies that you connected with, and I saw like Edina Public Schools was on there, Nine Mile Watershed District, the City of Bloomington. I, I didn't really see much about, you know, city safety services, like fire, police and other kind of other services, that maybe you guys talked to them or not, but I'd love to just get, and we'll go through these ones, but what feedback or input did you get from like city first responder teams on the impact of this district on their resources and their support? Any kind of input or feedback that you got on that?
No? Well, we didn't engage directly with our, you know, police, fire department. I don't know, I think that's a little outside maybe the scope of what, what this plan would look at. So we didn't, we didn't really do that.
Okay. I think that would be important, at least to get a sense of if we want to add new housing units, what would the core volume impact look like? As we know, there's a shortage in first responders, and so what does that impact look like for the city? The other group was Edina Public Schools. There's been some comments, I guess, on Better Together Edina, where folks are concerned with school capacity. So I tried to look it up, and across all the school districts, they are at capacity. My thinking was, well, if we close open enrollment, then we focus our energies on the folks in the city, then the school could absorb any kind of new housing that goes up. But just what are, what are your feedback or input from that agency, Edina Public Schools, on the different plans that you guys presented to them?
The main gist of the feedback from public, the public school system was that their concern is not being surprised by growth. And in the, in the context that we're in, in the framework that we're in of a decade or more of development, we're not going to be creating any surprises for the school district. There will be a number of years between the time when this plan is hopefully adopted and developers activate to do something in the district. and developers activate to do something in the district and then actually build. So this is a, there's years of notice between today and when something could potentially impact the school district. And that was their main concern in the conversations that we had with them, is not being surprised. So, I mean, they have, I think the last time I looked, the open enrollment is about 12% of the student population now. So if there are big shocks or changes, they have the ability over time to reduce that. And that's one of the ways that they would, that they would, would adapt.
I will pause for now and hopefully get back to some more questions, but I'll pass it along the line here. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your detailed explanation. So based upon your presentation, I'm understanding that it is the industrial area that's the oldest, and then the office, and then the housing within what's currently there. Is that a correct assumption?
We have that. One figure that shows the ages of the different buildings here.
There you go. In any case, I guess what I'm after, or my question behind that is, are you envisioning redevelopment of all three segments? Or would it mostly be industrial redevelopment that you're, that you're envisioning or that this plan envisions?
I can take that on. We, we had a lot of discussion about, sort of, as mentioned earlier, part of the discussion around aging buildings is, most of these are in good, good condition. They're not deteriorated, there is not, I would not call this blighted. So there's not properties here where it's an imminent need to remove and replace them. And certainly, a lot of them have a useful life. The tendency of offices fluctuated because of recent trends, but this still remains a lot of value-added area. The question becomes for the property owners, the economics of redevelopment versus renewal. That is a question, and it's a question that we cannot answer for them per se, though we can map out what's likely. For some properties, spending money to outfit them, make them better, makes the most economic sense. In other cases, it's infill, you're adding spaces, in other cases, it's demolition. So there, this plan opens up the possibility of a lot of different possible futures. It's tied somewhat to the age of the building, but really it's tied to the sort of, the inherent economics of the site.
And the use. And would the fact that it's, some of this is on a floodplain, limit the amount of redevelopment that would be possible?
Yes. I, that because of that, as mentioned earlier, because of the high water table, underground structures is pretty much, besides footings, is pretty much off limits in terms of, say, you wanted to put underground parking, not really an option here. And also meeting stormwater requirements who require investment in the site that's over and above maybe some costs of, that might be associated with development.
And what about height? Because there's not much here in terms of industrial that's, that's, you know, taller than one or maybe two stories.
There are height limits in place, and this plan does not propose changing the ones that are in the zoning code right now.
And in terms of, you just briefly mentioned about CP running an extension line.
Oh, maybe that was, the rail line is, is, the rail line is a rail line, it is not changing. There's something called the CP Trail, which is a trail project, which is on one of these slides. It's just called that because it's near there, it doesn't extend rail at all.
Thank you for the clarification. And, and sort of tangentially related to what Commissioner Smith said, in terms of the schools, you've got, 70th Street is very busy with buses and it's close to the high school, it's close to one of the two middle schools, you've got the bus garage, I think, right in this area that's relatively new. So how would this impact all the school-related, the traffic issues around the school, all the school traffic and the bus traffic?
I don't think we explored that directly in terms of the circulation of traffic specific to the schools.
Yeah. So typically, when a property redevelops, we require them to do a traffic study, and so when individual properties redevelop, that's when we would look at kind of what types of improvements would be required with that.
Okay, last question. Do you have any idea how many people are currently employed in this area?
We think it's somewhere between 4 and 7,000.
4 and 7,000?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much.
4,000 and 7,000, yep.
So, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Excuse me. So there seems to be a, you know, concern from residents about the schools, it seems to be a big issue. The city, when the city was first growing, I mean, between 1950 and 1970, we added tens of thousands of residents, right? So we've, we've gone through this sort of thing before, right? We're not adding tens of thousands of people here.
Correct.
Okay. Just checking. The Star Tribune had an article the other day that was kind of a gnashing of teeth about downtowns and central business districts post COVID, where they're saying that, you know, or some people are predicting that downtowns are going to have to change, or central business districts, which is, you know, part of this is, is kind of like that, have to change because there's less demand for office space and more people are working from home and whatnot. Does, does this plan address that at all in terms of, you know, the new way of people working?
Yeah, I think, so, so part of the area in the northeast corner that's currently just guided for office, that's part of the area that's guided for mixed use. So that could allow for, to continue to be office, it could allow for some housing to be there, it could allow for some light industrial, or it could allow for some retail. Similarly, along the south side of Edina Industrial Boulevard, I believe that's guided for high-density employment, but we're proposing to keep it industrial, which does allow for office space or anything allowed in the industrial district. So we're trying to maintain as much flexibility as possible, kind of for that reason. Yeah.
I also wanted to add that during the process, and some of you may be aware, we had some focus groups with property owners and with businesses. And I should also mention, in addition to the Bolton Mink team, we had Janet King from Account Development Associates and Bill Smith from BECO Associates as part of our team, adding really very value-added components. Janet in particular ran the focus groups, and we actually talked to the people who own the biggest office buildings out there. They participated in the focus groups and asked them very specific questions, what's it like to be trying to maintain office at this point? And as you pointed out, as everyone knows, it's different. It's a different market right now. However, what we heard from them is, this place still has a great deal of embodied value. It's a great location. Central business districts are more impacted than some of these not as central, but still very vital districts like this one. And certainly, there's an opportunity to invest in it, to make value-added improvements and to provide some more intensification of use that can continue to function going forward. It's a different picture than in the past, but they were very bullish and certainly thought there was, there was room for more investment and even expansion. One thing they did point out in terms of mixing uses, presence of retail and expansion of retail in the area as an amenity for residents, an amenity for the workers in the area, is a value-added component, as well as other updates. I think we mentioned earlier, climate change plan, the city's sustainability goals were kind of embodied in this, and I think that the private sector also emphasizes that too, both as a corporate responsibility thing and as an amenity for the residents and workers in the area. So we heard from the private sector, as well as from the public analysis, about the value of this place, and a good sense that with, with smart investment can continue to be important.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then could you, did you have a table? I know it's in the report, I don't remember if it was in your presentation, of, for the suggested plan, the number of jobs versus the number of housing units? Is that, do you have that handy or?
I think it's in the appendix.
I just wonder if you could address, you know, the relative ratio of jobs to businesses that are, jobs to residences that are going to be added?
We're looking it up.
Okay.
While they're looking it up, I will say this was, as far as the ratio of jobs to residents is, was the highest of jobs to residents ratio of any of the other alternatives. There is new residents being added, but it was a relatively small number compared to some of the alternatives considered. Did you find it?
I'm sorry?
You thinking of the column charts or the table? There were two descriptions of that.
Yeah, it was different scenarios, and it showed the jobs versus housing, yeah. Be useful to see.
Say, Lauren, what do I hit here to get the camera? Is it just the doc cam? There you go.
You want to read out the numbers or?
Okay, so, yeah, yeah. So in each case, in each scenario, there, the jobs are much higher than the, than the housing units. And was any thought put into, you know, in terms of addressing, you know, our goals for, for the comprehensive plan in terms of adding housing units that were skewing one way or the other in terms of doing it this way? I mean, if, if we're, if we already have a deficit for housing units and we're adding even more jobs than housing units, is this really a balanced way of, of addressing that issue?
I think you said the key word there, Commissioner Miranda, and that's balance. What the working group was trying to achieve was a balance, not only that made sense for the district itself, but for the district in the context of the city. So if you look at the Cahill District as an employment center, it, it's a, it's a, it's more likely, it's a more likely place to create jobs than, say, my neighborhood. And so it's, it's fit to purpose for that sort of thing. So I guess, in the, you know, in the end analysis, doesn't surprise me, given the balance that we were trying to achieve, that there's more jobs created than housing. And I think that's really what the team was trying to do, was to get the right balance for the district and the city, if that makes sense.
Okay. Because I mean, there's, there's not a lot of areas in the city where you can add dense housing, right? We're not gonna, we're not gonna put in the middle of your neighborhood, you know? We're not gonna put in the middle of my neighborhood, probably. And so, you know, there's limited spaces where we can have apartment buildings and that sort of thing. So, so that's just one of my concerns. And what we have this up here in the different scenarios, the, you know, the business node hasn't, doesn't change from each one. Is there a reason why that was sort of constant in all four?
I think the, the approach that we took with the business node was that it's gonna be similar in, in form and, or size and function to what it is today, but just adapted to be more attractive and more friendly to its potential uses. So that's why it's not really showing a big increase in numbers.
So it's, I mean, so today, what it is, is basically one-story commercial buildings with surface parking lots, right?
Yep, and some retail.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you. And let's see. That's it for now. Thank you.
I want to talk a little bit before my questions about just what you brought up, Commissioner Miranda. You know, and some of the business owners in there talked about that these are living wage jobs and good value jobs, and they're talking about some of the flex industrial space and, you know, having some lavatories. So there, there are, there's some technical expertise needed in some of these jobs. And so I saw the 10,000 jobs as places where our residents could go, rather than driving farther afield. Edina residents or kind of neighboring communities can come and work here. So I kind of appreciated having those jobs in our neighborhood, in our city. So I kind of took the open for business scenario. You guys worked hard on, on reaching a consensus on that, so I kind of took that to heart and went through, and I appreciated a lot of the feedback from the businesses and went through some of that feedback. And one of the things they talked about was flexible industrial space, and that was really interesting to me. Do you guys have any more information or can you expand on that?
I can speak to that. The flexibility of the industrial space is a key component in sort of the entrepreneurialism of the district. There are uses that are evolving, and certainly this is a place where things are scaled right to allow for some new ideas. I think we, we didn't mention it in this presentation, but the Edina Innovation Lab is a presence in this district that's, that's sort of focused on thinking about what's next. Again, you can't mandate that, but you can create spaces that are fertile ground for ideas to grow. Flex spaces allow for different uses in a building, and I think the Edina industrial framework is, reflects that. It's, these are primary industrial uses, but there's a lot of different types of subuses and accessory uses that happen in the space. And certainly with evolving business needs, places where you can store things, we can manufacture things, we can have office space, we can have different ways spaces are used and can be changed over time and adapted over time are key. If you, if things are locked too far down, it can be hard to be adjusting to the evolving needs of a business that may grow over time and need to have an expanded or different presence. So, again, it's, that is part, each industry is a little bit different, and certainly, it looks differently if you're making physical products versus ideas in tech, but having that opportunity and having that space in a very convenient and central location, as this is, is key to a lot of business success.
And that industrial zoning allows for more flexibility, is that correct?
Generally speaking, yes.
Yeah, in terms of uses especially, yes.
Okay. And then a couple of other things that, and I appreciated the letter from, you had like six development companies, Alfa and Chu and Ryan Companies that kind of talked about some things, and one of the things they talked about was the parking guidelines, which I appreciated getting their feedback because they have to sell these buildings or, you know, get these buildings leased to people. They talked about reducing parking from 1.3 to 1.25. I don't have the whole packet here.
I can speak to that a little bit. I say, I think, mentioned earlier with, with the evolving use of industrial office areas, they just don't need as many spaces as they may have once. And so just the current, a lot of these areas are what we call overparked, where there's just spaces that are never filled, and they don't expect them to be filled in the near term. So that space is just sitting there underutilized. That space could be repurposed. It could be, it could be expanded building, it could be a new building, it could be green space, it could be something besides pavement. And I think that that's recognized, generally speaking. And I know the city has been exploring parking adjustments in general that impact that. But a lot of this isn't so much that it was mandated, it's just that it's there right now.
Could we emphasize that in this district plan? Is someone on one of the tables that, you know, maybe there's not as much parking? Or we can adjust that parking ratio for, that we can be a little bit more flexible, a little bit more open for business?
The plan does, among the many things we talk about, we do talk about the possibility of repurposing that as part of the redevelopment scenario, and certainly, at least some of these, they show parking lots going away or being reused. So I don't, we don't propose changing any of the ratios in the district or changing the ratios at the city level, so.
Yeah. I think the plan speaks generally about, you know, being open-minded towards other parking solutions, like shared parking, district parking, things like that. But it's kind of outside the scope of this plan to get into recommending like really specific, like what the parking ra, ratio should be in the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, just consider parking ratios. Go ahead.
Just for a little more context, Commissioner Felt, so just last year, I think it was, the planning commission and city council adopted a new off-street parking ordinance, which had not been updated, I don't think, for nearly 50 years, since the 70s, if I recall. And that off-street parking ordinance, you know, depending on your beliefs about these things, maybe brought us up to 10 years ago. There's certainly, in the minds of people who are, who think a lot about parking, there's certainly a lot more progress that the city of Edina can make, particularly, well, not just in all areas of parking, not just off-street parking. So that's something that we, as Hyla mentioned, it's not really specifically in the area plan, probably doesn't fit in the area plan, but it's certainly something that planning commission and the city council can take up related to the area plan.
So this question might be similar. You know, there was one comment on signage and zoning guidelines around signage. And I know, I've driven through there, and I'm like, what is this building? And then I drive two blocks, and I'm like, I still, where was that sign? So I've, I've only had to go to a couple of places in there, and so I, you know, Google mapped them and gone, but I've gone past stuff that I don't understand what it is. And someone mentioned that they had lost a client because the signage wasn't flexible. So I'm wondering if there's anything in there about signage as well?
It would, it would be the same as off-street parking. There was a monument signage variance that came up before the planning commission, probably two years ago, for Highway 100 businesses in the Cahill District. So I, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's not something that we would typically be in scope for an area plan, but would be, related work that the commission- scope for an area plan, but would be all, related work that the Commission and the City Council could do to support the area plan.
I was going to say, one, not specific to signage requirements, but the public realm plan does talk about wayfinding and monumentation and sort of gateways into the district. One thing about the district, you just arrive and you, it sort of assumes you know where you're going, and it doesn't, there's not a, there's not a sense of arrival, there's not a sense of branding or place. And certainly, this plan suggests that there could be, it's some recommendations around that to say, what does that mean? Not that it has to be big or flashy, but just creating a more, a presence around that and creating more identity and a sense of where you are. Again, that has to be managed with reasonable signage expectations. You don't want anything that's too loud or flashy, but acknowledges that there is opportunity as part of the public realm plan to re-explore that.
Another question, wayfinding. Because the neighborhood notice on the northwest or the business side is on the southeast corner, or the residential kind of areas on the, and maybe it's one childcare is on the other corner. And there was a lot of talk about there, about being able to kind of walk to lunch or go outside on nice days. So I saw this plan as really kind of fighting those walking paths, and I see the walking path is literally a big diagonal X in there. So I think it's part of that wayfinding, if there's other ways to get pedestrians through there, especially if there is conflict with trucks, or some worry about that conflict between the two. I'd like to see, I suppose I'd be interested in seeing some wayfinding.
Yes, and as mentioned.
Other than just right next to the street, yeah.
Yeah. And I was saying that, mentioned earlier, the public realm plan goes, we don't have all the detail in here, but does go into some detail in terms of what are the logical pedestrian connections, there's some additional graphics here that are about the pedestrian network, and as improvements are made, where are the reasonable places so that you're creating safe rewarding walks and connections between places?
And, I mean, the trail and the Nine Mill Creek Watershed District are obvious partners for some of that.
Absolutely.
And then, the Nine Mill Creek Watershed District did kind of ask for specific things in the implementation table, just so it's clear.
Yep, I think, yep, we've kind of looked at those comments. We plan to kind of create like a comment log that we get from, to kind of track all the comments that we get from the other jurisdictions and respond to each one of them or explain how we can incorporate it in there. So I think with most of those comments from the Watershed District, they could be easily incorporated as implementation steps.
Okay, okay. Thank you, and thank you for all the work, and thank you for the list of businesses in there, that was very eye-opening, yeah.
Over here.
Yeah. I guess a few things have come up over the last few minutes. First, I guess, around the question about balance in jobs versus residential units. Can you remind me, what percent of A Dyna is still in for industrial right now?
2% is guided for industrial on the future land use map in the comprehensive plan.
Okay, 2%. All right. And then around parking. So there was a lot of comments so far from the three of you around, people expressing, you know, that they don't need parking so much, right, that it's not as necessary. There was a comment around parking that made sense in the 60s and 70s, but when I go through this survey group, which I spent a lot of time reading, I feel there's been conflict there in that, in that, in those comments, and I'd like to hear from you guys to rectify that a little bit. Specifically in the weaknesses or challenges of the district, right, there's multiple bullet points on here, and parking is in short supply for employees, 24/7 operations, five shifts, et cetera. Site is large, may not be used, traffic is heavy, Wood and Hill Brewery on-street parking can be problematic, businesses should provide enough parking on their site, people pull over because they have nowhere to park, et cetera. Parking on the street can be a hindrance to truck traffic, most employees drive, few are from, few, most employees are far away, right? So all these comments around not needing parking seems to not really jive with that feedback that you got from the work plan.
Sure, I think a lot of that feedback might have been, was specific to the brewery. And so it varies by use, right? Like, the office uses, we talked to one of the owners that owns three of the big office buildings, and they overwhelmingly told us that, yes, we have too much parking, we do not need it. Most of the office parking is not used.
The office buildings in which part of the area?
Mostly the east side of the district, where a lot of the offices. But you're right, it varies use by use. A lot of the true industrial uses, that don't have a lot of customers coming to them, they typically don't need as much parking. But where you see more community-serving uses that have gone into an industrial building, that industrial building was built oftentimes, you know, requiring less parking for the use that was there originally, and that community-serving use, like a brewery or, you know, a gym, is typically going to need more parking than what was there before. So it does depend on the use, but overwhelmingly, if you go through the district, there's a lot of areas where there is excess parking.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome, thank you guys. Yeah, Commissioner.
Yeah, David, maybe you can help me. It was the view just before the one with the options, scenarios A, B, I guess we could bring that one up. Yeah, so what is the direction that the plan will take, is that you present the four scenarios with a recommendation that scenario A was the favorite or was the consensus? I mean, how is, how are you showing, are you showing any preference for?
Absolutely, yes. I mean, our recommendation is for scenario A. I think we're showing all four of them here, just to give a sense of the process and the, you know, the thought process and the thinking behind the recommendation, some of the other options that we did not choose. I think that's the reason we're showing that.
I like the idea of having the different scenarios and then explaining why you prefer the one. I think that's better than saying, we're going with A. So, good, okay. But the others will be there, and that'll be helpful. Yes, thank you.
Thank you all. I have a few questions, but appreciate all the answers so far. One of the questions, just for context, is 2%, right? Is industrial use in the city, how much of that 2% is in this Cahill district?
Probably most of it. There's a little sliver of industrial that's on the west side of 169. I would guess, I would guess probably 80% of it is here, 20% is...
Yeah, that's a good estimate. And there's a small area up on London Dairy on 169.
Okay. I think it's important, too. I mean, it's not just, there's only 2%, but if most of it's here, I think it helps strengthen the point of considering preserving it versus letting it go. One other context point, you showed the pie chart of the age of the buildings, and at least with my simple mathematical skills, 1 plus 3 plus 5 is 9, which suggests 9% of buildings are within 35 years of age or younger, so most things are pretty old, at least a generation off. And I think it's important to consider and how it wraps into, something you brought up, but I would like you to expound upon it, kind of like Commissioner Borensey mentioned, of using zoning as a tool to really achieve some of the goals here. So on page 30 of your plan, you talk about keeping it industrial, not just for its flexibility, but I think it's worth expanding upon how that can be used to preserve the industrial core versus gaining flexibility by rezoning it to other things like residential, which would lose its culture quicker. Because what I think most of us see in other cities, you have industrial areas, once those are blighted and, you know, they gentrify, they don't go back to industrial, they're gone. It's gone. So I'd like you to just expand upon why and kind of how you got to that conclusion of keeping it this way, it has some flexibility in there, but why you aren't changing the zoning elsewhere and keeping that core industrial. I think it's important for residents to understand that, using zoning as a tool to kind of, even though there's, there's low benefits relatively speaking to industrial, there's low costs, and having that, that balance as a part of the city is good to not lose. And it seemed like, it was kind of eye-opening during the work session of why most people had consensus around doing it that way. I mean, in all of those options, A through D, that center never changed, right?
Yeah, I think it's recognizing, yeah, like, what we have here is mostly limited to this area. So those industrial uses are only allowed here. They're not allowed in the other parts of the city. So we could open this up to mixed use, and maybe some retail, maybe some housing would displace more of that industrial, but we're probably not going to open up other parts of the city to more industrial, right, and open and go the other way. So it's just kind of recognizing the limited amount of industrial land we have here and trying to protect it and keep it from being displaced by other types of uses. Yeah.
Yeah, could you speak also to like the evolution? Because when this started 18 months ago, right, there was a lot of pressure to maybe do more change, right? And so you've kind of, maybe not so much, maybe there were competing interests, but at least there's a consensus around this. Could you speak to kind of that education process for the working group members as well as the residents who engaged?
Yeah, we, there's so many points here, these are great. I was just going to, to just put a tail end on Addison's point, to say that this is not the only city that's studied sort of redevelopment or future of industrial areas. I think San Francisco may have been one of the first cities, but there, if you look across the country, many cities of note have tackled this issue because it's a tough one. You say, this area looks deteriorated, this area looks undervalued. We have residential and property owners and mixed-use developers knocking at our door every day, saying, we want to buy this and we want to turn it into something else. And it's a question, I want, David's going to weigh in on this, in terms of the mental journey and the process with the committee is saying, well, you see that and you think, well, that makes sense to transition, but then there's a moment to say, there is a value here. If it goes away, it's gone forever, probably, or at least near term. Let's stop, let's pause, let's think about what's the full value of this area. So, I don't know, David, if you want to talk about that process.
Just a couple of things, and then I'll get to your question about the 18-month journey. I think, to the question of protecting with zoning, developers were pretty clear with us, that, I felt, that probably, with a calculator, the highest value use of a lot of this land is going to be multifamily residential. So if you don't protect it, and it's probably consistent with the experience of many of you as planning commissioners, if you don't protect it, it's going to become something else. Not tomorrow, but eventually. So we, as a working group, are recommending that the city have a strategy of protecting this for financial diversification in our tax base, and for having an employment center within our city limits, and for other, as Commissioner Smith was saying, strategic reasons why this is a good thing. Another thing I would mention, Commissioner Bennett, you started off with a comment on how old some of these buildings are, and they definitely are, but it's our hope and expectation as a working group that if we are able to improve the surroundings with the kinds of things that the developers and building owners said they wanted, better transit access, sidewalks, better pedestrian facilities, easier ways to get to lunch at, what is that, Jimmy John's over there, that those are the kinds of things that are going to, over time, encourage investment among the property owners there. So if we are guiding to something better, then the hope is that they will, that they will come along. And then back to your other question about, you know, the progress from where we were 18 months ago to where we are today, I can only really speak for myself, but when I started this, I was wondering whether there was a place for multi-use in here. I wasn't sure. I was kind of hoping there would be, but I really didn't know, because I didn't know enough about, you know, the true importance or impact for so many reasons of having an industrial park in your city. Hadn't really thought much about it until I was part of this team. So I guess at that time, I was a little bit just open-minded and ambivalent about where we were going to end up. I think you mentioned that, like, there's some natural, there's some natural momentum in our development mindset for change, and that's what we're here for. So in a sense, I think what the working group is recommending kind of goes against the tide in protecting and being a bit conservative, frankly, in being very measured and thoughtful about whether we need to have change everywhere and what kind of change we need. So that's where, that's where I think we ended up. And the process is really interesting, because it was different to me than the things I've been involved with in the past.
Great answer, thank you. Well, one of the other questions I had, you know, it seemed like the overall goal, and at least the top bullet point, you said it protect, like, the business, the industrial. And I think, to Commissioner Smith's point, if that is the goal to protect, there is also a counterpiece to that of, how do you make it better? How do you enhance it? And so what seems like we shouldn't need to worry about on the enhancement side is the access. Like, how it exists right now provides great access to the area and access to the airport, all these other components. Regionally, the access is good, but once you're there, that circulation, the movement is different, that's where there could be enhancement. And so, just wanted you guys to maybe explain the difference of the movement, you know, along the perimeter versus the industrial core. You know, there's a Cahill connector that's contemplated through that. But how does the movement and how do your recommendations differ, depending on who you're trying to make it better for? So for instance, the industrial core has different goals for movement. One, on the industrial side, you need to move the trucks and the supplies and materials around safely primarily. And then it's getting the people that work there to other places to make it a better, more exciting place to work. But around the perimeter, there has to be different goals, and I don't know if I see a difference necessarily in kind of the multimodal connections, a lot of them just kind of split through the site. Could you just speak to kind of what the goal has been? And is it different by use?
Yes, and I can say that this was, this is an interesting jigsaw puzzle to play with, and with our public realm team has worked on this, because, as you know, there's not many road network options here, that it's a fractured network and by design. I mean, really, the way it was designed, if you put yourself in the mindset, was it's a regional destination, you're going to arrive here and then you're stopping, and then you're going back. It was mainly just that level of movement, that level of connectivity was what was contemplated. It didn't spend much effort or beyond that. I should also mention, because of the rail corridor here, there's also some logical boundaries. Creating another rail crossing would probably not, I think the plan contemplated, not worth it. So there's also the natural barrier, or maybe not natural, but established barrier of the rail in there. We did talk about the different access needs. Certainly, this is an attractive location for convenience for businesses that need a central location. It has embodied value. It will never not be valuable, just, just because of its location, getting traffic to and from here. Not that this turns into a distribution hub, but certainly the type of use that would find it attractive is everybody here who orders things from Amazon or from wherever with your, your little minivan that comes around and the mini distribution systems, those tactical, small-scale circulator networks becoming more and more critical and being centrally located. That's an important function, and moving trucks in and out safely is an important function. Same time, walking, biking, traveling through here, transit are important, too. And we heard that not just from residents, but from people who, if you have an office business here, your office workers want to be able to go out and walk, maybe they want to jog over their lunch hour, maybe they want to live nearby. So you're creating that amenity for everybody. Those are different needs and different behavioral patterns and different travel patterns. This plan is the best you could do with a network in terms of building that out, but does anticipate maybe there's some additional connections needed, just to make it better, make it function better. And it's always trying to mitigate the conflicts. I could say, one, the reasons we thought about scenario A with the residential on the north side is that allows a little better separation of residential uses on the northern end connecting to residential on the northern end, and sort of south and east being more dedicated towards employment. It isn't that perfect, but just trying to think about how we're making those... It isn't that perfect, but just trying to think about how we're making those networks exist compatibly with one another. I hope that was an answer, more or less.
Okay, thank you. Speaking about flexibility and again, making it better, I'm just trying to think, how, how does this help advance and make it better for the business owners, that industrial core, which is twofold, you know, how does it make it better to work there? And so to me, those connections are critical if you're working there. During our work session, one idea that I floated was, you know, maybe a connector bus or something that circulates and takes people places. And so that's kind of my next point. You know, 50th and France is a business district and part of the implementation strategy is to maybe, you know, in addition to a wayfinding and signage identity plan as a key component to that, a business district also, to me, you could spread money to handle internal circulation. Did you guys look much into the formation of a business district, what that would take, what the, what the opportunities the city could kind of grab onto? And it seemed like it was tasked for the economic development team. But like what, what is, I mean, what is the, the potential of that? Is it, is it an easy lift or is that a big lift? Is that something that can happen right away? Because that unity seems like it's key for wayfinding, communicating where to go as well as getting from point A to point B if you work there. Was there much in that? And I mean, in your experience in other areas where maybe business districts have been formed, it's more of a retail side, I'd assume, more than an industrial park side? But with 250 businesses, it seems like a great opportunity.
That's a great question. I would, I'm pausing, I want to hear if others have insights too. Forming a new district, new district, and that's sort of something that where a property owners are, I would say voluntarily choosing to assess themselves or acquire resources and pool resources requires a really strong sense of common purpose and common investment in certain functions. And retail often is, comes around, is it a safe, clean, welcoming place for your customer base, for people who are, who are choosing to come there to spend money or to recreate? You have the motivating factor in your business district to, let's get together, let's pick up the trash, take care of the graffiti, make sure that the flower pots have panties in them and so forth. So there's a motivating factor around that. Industrial uses that are not as retail focused, not as public focused, they, there's less of a need, they still want the public realm to look good, but I think that probably the public purpose is probably not as strong among them. That doesn't mean it's not a good idea and it doesn't mean they couldn't get there, but I think the plans, recommendations focus on sort of a proto step of, let's find a common purpose, let's find common things that would be worth doing together. And they can be there, but I think there's going to be some groundwork and organizing probably needed first just to explore deeper what, what those specific needs are. And most of the, most of the public realm improvements focused on things that are within the city's control rather than saying, hey, all the businesses are suddenly going to do whatever they're going to do. So.
So I guess in your experience over the last 18 months, I mean, what type of specific needs have maybe emerged so we can jumpstart some of that stuff? Just thinking of, you know, hey, we approve this, we get it going. Where can we start implementing some of that strategy? Just in terms of like, say, the formation of a business district, you know, it's, it's different in a retail sense where it's, you know, here, it seems like a lot of the value based off a survey and feedback is, you know, parking's good in some areas, not enough in other areas. Getting to and from is challenging, so maybe transportation is a key ingredient to circulate the district. Are there other kind of, as you would say, key ingredients to making it more successful for employees to work here?
For a business district, my, I had not really spent much time thinking about that. I thought that might be, my first call would be to the chamber to see if they had some sort of ability to help form something like that. As far, for me, priorities, implementation priorities would be the things that, projects that we already have going on or planned in the district or things that we know are going to be happening within the next year. For example, the CP Trail is in the plan for the Three Rivers Park District, and that will require some infrastructure changes in the Cahill District. So for us as a city, we will want to be looking at, okay, what in the Cahill Plan is adjacent to that, related to that, that we can piggyback on to the work that's already going on in the district to take advantage of that and make progress in that one area. So that's the way I would prioritize it. And then the way the change is going to happen over the next decade is just continuing that process as areas redevelop.
Okay.
I could add, I just mentioned priorities for the plan, page 59 of the plan does have some initial ones, and a lot of them are focused again on public movement around that. But as I said, the, the chamber and other conversations with the property owners could bring things to the forefront. The reason I threw this graphic on the screen was also saying that it's not necessarily always partnerships or collaboration that happens to happen at the entire district level because it's a big sort of mixed district. So maybe it doesn't think of itself as one big thing. But sub-district level interventions or sort of side-by-side or smaller scale interventions. This slide is, is oriented around stormwater solutions, thinking about maybe sub-district stormwater solutions where there could be some shared benefit. But certainly it also, it could be different types of partnerships as well. And shared parking is a very classic example. Not that everyone always wants to share their parking, but often it can be a much more efficient solution. So encouraging those relationships and opportunities where they emerge.
Yeah, so shared parking. I guess why it comes to mind, you know, like we're looking for opportunities for it to be an innovative business district, that's, that term's used in there. And so as I've seen with other development frameworks like the Grand View One, there are strategies that aren't achieved and it's been 10 years, you know? Short-term, mid-term, long-term, we're knocking on it and nothing's happening because it falls on the city's shoulders to primarily get a lot of that started. So I guess why I'm thinking of business district, are there other innovative ways to kind of crowdfund, like jumpstart certain areas where you can kind of let the private side run with it and, you know, fund some of the change? That's an easier, you know, low, low-hanging fruit versus wait for the city to kind of invest in that infrastructure, which is quite a bit more expensive and harder to really get going as I've seen through other smaller area plan creation. I, I don't know if that's come up or been considered, but maybe just something to be aware of.
If I can say something on that, I don't know if others thoughts too. I mean, part, part of the, the goal of this plan is to be a jumpstarting entity in itself because this is about conveying the city's intent and purpose and goals for the area clearly to public and private entities so that developers who are interested in this area, and they certainly are, we certainly did hear from some who are very interested in investing in this area, have a picture, at least a starting point for what the city would like to see. That's an invitation for them to set forward, for them to think big and for them to think what's possible. This plan in the implementation section has a lot of different opportunities. It's not saying, it's not a mandate to say you must do these top 10 things, but here are a selection of things the city could support and the city would want to see. Again, not preempting your development review process, but encouraging people to think differently and to bring forward the best ideas for the city's consideration. So that's, that's always a delicate balancing act because you don't want to be too restrictive or too open, but the plan itself hopefully should be able to communicate that well.
So with the level of flexibility around the area, just thinking of other uses, I, I know housing was brought up, but you know, entertainment, kind of like the brewery serves as like a, a community gathering space, but also entertainment. It's been said, I want this to be an exciting place to come to. A lot of it is kind of community, like service-oriented businesses, you're coming there to learn something, play something, you know, service something. But kind of like the brewery, is there other flexibility that's been considered or needs identified that people are like, you know, it'd be nice, you know, at least as you think about the ring around the industrial core, other uses like entertainment-based that have come up and are accommodated by the zoning that we're going to adopt?
Yeah, I think, so in the implementation section, that's kind of one of the first next steps is to take a look at our zoning and look at, maybe take a look at the types of uses that are allowed and see if that matches what's envisioned here in the plan. Because you're exactly right, like those types of kind of entertainment uses like, like the brewery, like, you know, sports training, things like that. Those are great uses and there might be some other ones that maybe function similarly that might also be good for the district that aren't allowed currently.
Yeah, that's it. Just want to thank you again. You got any other questions, follow-ups?
Go ahead.
All right, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, no, this is really great, Jimmy. Thanks for asking those questions. I actually want to talk about that. I have three questions and I'll follow up with kind of what Jimmy was saying. In the, somebody feedbacked from the business developers, there was a question about watershed district regulations. Could you guys expound upon that a little bit? Just what, what is the watershed district regulation?
Sure. So like we mentioned, a lot of this area is very prone to flooding, so a lot of it is within the floodplain. So when your property is within the floodplain, there's just some additional regulations you have to comply with as far as elevating structures. Like Highland noted earlier, it almost kind of rules out any sort of underground parking. It's, it just makes it much more challenging and you have to accommodate for that stormwater somehow onsite. It's just, it makes expansion more difficult.
Gotcha. That makes sense. The other question was on sewer capacity. So I think deeper in the appendix, there was, I believe, a set of options for sewer, you know, infrastructure development, let's just say. And the prices was really wild. It could go from, and I forgot what the range was, was from like $3 million to like $30 million. And I wasn't sure what that was. Could someone, maybe you guys or maybe someone from the infrastructure team, talk about sewer infrastructure and that wide range of costs that, that is contemplated there?
Fortunately, we have Ross Pitter from our engineering department who's been waiting here all night just to get asked a question. So here, he can come up and help with that one.
Commissioner Smith, the, I think it was appendix C or D had a table, I've got it here, where the utility costs were all kind of put out in a matrix. This was from a study that preceded your planning effort. So without knowledge of the different planning scenarios that you might run, we wanted to get ahead. And this looked at a variety of other options in terms of levels of growth and then different directions that we could take additional sewer capacity. So if you were to go to that page, we've simplified it in the text. Option four is the option that we've chosen in terms of where to go. That's along the existing alignment. And then as this planning effort comes to conclusion, then we'll have a sense for the densities that need to be served. And I think my, my main takeaway in terms of, you know, flexibility, we have a lot of flexibility to serve the densities that you're considering. And we considered much higher density ratios and much higher sanitary sewer growth. So the, the numbers that I'm looking at right now in terms of existing system needs from that option four in scenario one and scenario four, existing system needs somewhere around 6.6 million, and this was from a 2019 study, so we're definitely going to have to bring those dollars up to current day. And then about seven, or $16 million, 15.88 million for needs. We have an existing sanitary capacity constraint from about France Avenue West to Highway 100 in the system as it is. So there's needs existing. We're poised to, you know, start to remedy those and, and provide the, the projects that meet those needs. We just need the planning effort here to come to a conclusion and then we'll be putting out a request for proposals on some of the projects that will take place to, to bring that capacity here. So 6.6 million and 16.88, or 15.88 million.
Gotcha. And I know the details of which option, I know you're leading into option four, whereas things evolve in the future that could change, cost could change, we understand that could be very dynamic. Just a quick corollary to this one is, is from a, a water supply issue. If there's a high water usage, industrial use that comes into the site, would we, would we be able to, to support that as well? So water usage coming into the site, any comments there?
Yeah, so this, we focused our last comments there on sanitary sewer. So for the water utility, the primary issue with industrial zones is, you know, having abundant water for fire suppression. So we have no issues in the, in the district or in the zone on that. Globally in the city, we've got some needs along 70th Street, so on the northern edge of this district, we know we need more east-west capacity in the city. So those are existing needs and not related to this redevelopment. And then in terms of high density or high, high-use water district or industry, we have several of those in the district right now. They source their water from private wells, so they really don't depend on our, our public system. And that's an economic issue for them. So they, they do pay sewer bills and they, they put industrial waste into our sewers. So sewer capacity is really our constraint there. We see a little bit of growth demand for, in some of the residential scenarios in a portion of the district. All of that is easily served by our system with just minor changes that have come with development.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
My last question, I think it ties back to what Commissioner Bennett was talking about, and I was really thinking about this one, which is the execution. So this team definitely pulled together the effort to bring businesses together, bring residents together, look at the different scenarios, come up with a consensus on, here's what the plan is, here's what the zoning should look like. But I think where we have a gap is on the execution side, which is, there's quite a long list of development opportunities. Everything from, you know, the roundabout at Dewey Hill and Cahill Road, that triangular route, fixing that maybe a roundabout sidewalk expansion, sidewalk creation, sidewalk continuation. You know, we, we source up images of some dead-end sidewalks, parking that came up quite a bit here, even like traffic lights and bus stops. There's some bus stops that was ADA compatible, some didn't, some had slopes, some had a shed, some had a bench, some didn't. So it's a whole list of things that is on this list for improvement. And so what I was thinking, and you kind of touched on it a little bit, where you want to pass this off essentially to the economic development group or a different group, but having a Cahill Business Roundtable that meets to then prioritize what are the things that we, we should do next on the list? Here's the resources that we have, either it be financial, whatever it is, the city could provide. Now let's pick from this list on the next thing that we're going to work on next. And that's really clear to the business owners and the businesses in that area to say, next year, you're going to get that sidewalk that you always wanted. Two years from now, you're going to get these three bus stops that you always wanted. Something that brings that clarity is going to probably attract the businesses to come and stay there because they could see what's coming. And so I think what would be really valuable in this plan is if we add some level of, maybe Mr. Alkire, your work is not going to be done, you might have to create a Cahill District Roundtable and manage it ongoing to make sure, to make sure that the list of identified opportunities, they're giving that feedback and you're working with the city to prioritize it. Because I just don't want to see it fall off the crack where you're not connected with the business community. You know, you kind of mentioned, I will see where it aligns with what the city is doing and then see what these guys want and there could be a disconnect there, right? The city might be going down this path, but the business wants this. We have to bring them together so that it's in sync. And so I think the next step of this thing is, the plan is done and it looks great and I love option A and I was going for that from the beginning, is now how do we get that execution piece to give that pathway, right? So that businesses could see what's coming next so that they could now invest because now there's clarity on what the city is doing. And I think that's the piece that maybe Jimmy was trying to draw out of us here a little bit as the next step. So that, I think, would be critical that we could package up and even send it to my council, say, here, you know, we have the plan and we have an execution plan as well.
I would, I could jump in on that to just add, we've got the implementation steps that are within the plan, but it also ties into the planning commission work plans moving forward. I've heard a lot of great ideas here, the things that could advance to your work plans next year, the year after. So I think keep a lot of what you're thinking this evening and think about our work plan. this evening and think about our work plan for next year. That's it.
Any other questions?
One other thing, I sent some, you talked about it, but we haven't talked about it much tonight, is the flooding in the district. And I'm sure, and I felt some anxiety maybe through the, some of the business owners' comments about what's going to be done before I invest in my property. Some people have gone ahead and invested their property, but that seems to be another thing besides the roundabout. And so could, and you had those three plans, a site-by-site solution to the floodwater or a district-wide solution? Yeah, that, that one. Can you talk to that a little bit?
Certainly. And these are conceptual plans. As you can tell by the diagrammatic nature, they're not meant to be taken very literally. We, we had a lot of good discussion in the committee with work group and with, with the staff and with everybody in terms of what is possible to do proactively on storm water. And it's tricky. And one of the reasons it's tricky is there's very limited public ownership in this district. You have the streets and roadways, and that's mostly it. There's a few public uses, but they're, they're not going anywhere anytime soon. So the city's ability to do something different proactively requires some cooperation on land side with, with the private, private sector and the private sector being involved in that. And that's a choice too, in terms of the city's resources. Could there be some bolder, bigger steps? The plan has some ideas around bigger district stormwater solutions. Yes, it is a major investment and the plan does not proactively step in that direction. At the same time, there's also opportunities to partner and work with developers and with the watershed, who has expressed a willingness, as you've probably seen with that, to have those conversations. The plan, again, it doesn't call to say one thing has to happen that way, but certainly it does open up the opportunities and possibilities here. What this suggests again is that you don't need to solve, for stormwater, solving the entire district in one big thing would be an enormous lift. But one to two to three or smaller sites, that could create some value and it might be more doable. But it would depend again on willing property owners and partnership with entities. So, can I answer it?
All right. So this is a public hearing. I just want to thank you guys for an awesome presentation. Thank all the residents involved. I think you did a great job addressing why this is important to preserve this area. I guess one question, just for people who are just wondering, why are we even doing this? I think we spoke to it a little bit. I touched on it early. But this is the city's opportunity to be proactive. This isn't a project that's going to get built. This is a vision for this area. And the choice to not do anything, which could happen, maybe, you know, city council or the planning commissioner or other leaders didn't encourage us to do this district plan. What could happen is you could see, you know, a site in the middle of this area go for redevelopment of some mixed-use, very dense, you know, residential use. No one's stopping anyone from just proposing that, right? And then we would be reacting to it. And then if we made that change, it might have been the wrong change. So like, that's kind of why we're doing this project. It's important to be proactive with these special areas in our city. So I think you really hit on why it's important to preserve this area more than totally change it. So thank you, guys. And we will open this to a public hearing. If someone is still tuning in from like two hours ago, wow. If you're still in the queue, good job. For, for those who are still, there is, okay. For those who are tuning in and would like to speak, just to get ready, please call the number 786-496-5601 and enter conference pin 6960282 pound, as you see on the screen. And you'll push star one to get in the queue to speak. We'll let people do that. But for now, we'll open it to whoever is here in person that would like to speak on this matter. You have three minutes to speak. Same rules apply as the community comment. Come to the podium, full name, address. All right.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Steve Brown. I live at 5528 Halifax Lane. I'm here this evening to urge you to recommend to the City Council to adopt the Cahill District Plan and the associated plan amendments. I want to begin by thanking the entire working group who worked over 18 months to develop a very well-thought-out plan. I especially want to thank David Alkire, Addison Lewis, Chris Asker, Kate Agnew, and Hila Mays from Boltman and Menk Consulting for their excellent listening, their great deliberation, and their balanced approach, and also their wise and patient leadership of their entire team. I especially want to thank David Alkire for providing what for me was a much-needed perspective. I participated in the kickoff workshop and the third workshop. And as an advocate for more affordable housing, I was drawn to scenarios B, C, and D for obvious reasons. David, in his opening remarks at the Planning Commission May 24th Work Session, highlighted the importance of preserving the industrial core that is the heart of the Cahill District. He noted that it is important to Edina's tax base. It provides a much-needed diversification of Edina's economic engine and is an irreplaceable part of the community. This allowed me to think about the scenarios from a much broader perspective. I am grateful that the work group recommended scenario A, which includes a neighborhood mixed-use area with potential for building an additional 1,100 housing units. This, by the way, assumes that all the land in this mixed-use area is devoted to housing and that it is all built to the maximum density. In reality, this is very unlikely to happen. However, if it were fully built out, assuming the standard adherence to the city's affordable housing policy, this suggests that 10% or 110 units will be affordable housing. I think it's worthwhile to remind ourselves that Edina is zoned so that 93% of the available land is for single-family homes and that Edina is fully built out. This means that any new affordable housing must come through redevelopment. The city has a goal of adding 1,800 affordable units by 2030. Based on what has been built and what has been approved by the midpoint, which is 2025, we'll only be at 21% of the way to our goal. The decision to include a neighborhood mixed-use area in scenario A of the Cahill District Plan opens up a great opportunity to make more progress toward our goal. I am grateful for that opportunity. I like the proposed Cahill District Plan and I urge you to recommend it to the council. The final point I would like to make is that one of the challenges of this district is the management of the storm water. This was identified as a challenge, but the solution was recommended, that was recommended was the commission to a sub-watershed assessment of the district and to create a plan. I urge you to remember the need for this very important work as you develop your 2024 work plan as a planning commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who is here that would like to speak on this matter? Please come up. All right, we will open it to the people tuning in who might be sitting in our virtual queue.
So we do have one person on the line and they have indicated that they would like to speak. And so I just want to remind this person to please state your full name and address before you start addressing the commission. And you should be free to speak here in one minute, or one second here. We'll have the operator unmute your line.
Hello, is everybody able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, fantastic. I actually was unable to, I had some technical difficulties as unable to speak during the public comment portion. But I've been really happy to hear this portion. My name is Daniel Eaton. I'm at 5712 Parkwood Lane in Edina. And I just wanted to, after hearing everything that this commission is doing, everything you guys are doing with the planning of the Cahill District, I live near the Londonderry area. And it was actually mentioned as that it's a part of the industrial heart of Edina and a part of what it is that Edina needs to preserve. So I'm just calling in to let the commission know that I'm really encouraged by this process. And hopefully, as more redevelopment happens in other parts of the city, we can take this model, the Cahill model, and use it in other parts. Because I think, one of the things that I've noted is, we talked about industrial and office and things ebbing and flowing. But once those uses are gone, they're gone for good. And so I think we need to make sure that we preserve the character of our neighborhoods. We need to make sure we preserve the ability for our neighborhoods to have diversity within work and within areas and amenities for our neighbors. And we cannot get fixated on housing and dense housing specifically at the expense of our neighborhoods. So I would just continue to reiterate and reinforce the fact that we have zoning already in place. We have critical plans, the strategic plans that the city's putting in place. And to use that and let that guide us. Let's not be guided and dictated by developers. Let's make sure that we're planful. Let's make sure that we're thoughtful. And this Cahill Plan, I'm hoping, can be used and leveraged as we think about redevelopment from the 159 area. And we're going to hear a lot about that with the 5780 project coming up. So again, my encouragement to the planning commission is please recommend to the City Council that we put in place very thoughtful planning, very similar to what you guys are doing with Cahill, into this redevelopment along Londonderry and Lincoln. And we'll not rush. Let's not be dictated by developers. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for calling in. Do we have anyone else in the queue ready to speak?
I am double-checking here real quick. No, we do not have any other callers. So I believe it is safe to proceed.
Right. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Public hearing is closed. So now we take it back to the planning commission for us to deliberate. And this is the opportunity for us to share our comments, discuss, and ultimately provide a recommendation for approval or denial of this plan to the City Council. There are always opportunities to make amendments to an approval or put conditions of approval, just so everyone's aware. Open it to fellow commissioners for discussion points. Yeah, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I would reiterate a lot of what has been said by folks in the audience, including Steve, you know, really great work coming together, working on this plan for the last 18 months. I think that's a really good model and it shows dedication to how the city is focusing on improving our different areas in a really thoughtful way. So from my perspective, I, I think Plan A is a good plan. I kind of mentioned that in the beginning. And I think all that work to get to this part where it's now the plan is the step in the right direction. Now it's the step of executing the plan. And I think that's the piece that if the recommendation that we put forward to City Council and to the Met Council also includes, here's the process that we want to follow to execute on these items, that's very powerful. Because it not only shows that we have the ability to create the plan, if the foresight and a method of executing through that plan to get it to completion. So I think if that could be added, that would be awesome. The other point is that with a comprehensive plan amendment, you know, the key word comprehensive, we want to make sure that all different agencies have seen it and given some kind of feedback. I think, you know, we talked about the school district a little bit, and I think the comment was that they just don't want to be surprised. I think if we have something more substantial from them to say, here's the triggering points that we would follow through on if X happens. I know last year in June 22, the countryside was expanding their building to add, I think, six classrooms. I think there was some expansion on the Cornelia School District. And then all the other work that the schools did was just more cosmetic upgrades to facilities, right? But not so much expansion of rooms and classes. And I think if we have a feedback from the school district to say, hey, you know, here's the method that we've, that we'll follow as these things come to fruition, that we now expand or create or develop, that would be really powerful. I would also include the city first responder services to also kind of give some more concrete approval of, yep, we agree with Plan A and we support it and here's why. I think that's also very positive. Because what you don't want to have happen, I don't think is the Met Council to turn around and say, I have some gaps in different city services that may or may not have given much feedback on what you guys are doing. Yes, the planning commission agrees, but I see some holes here and these are, these are the agencies that haven't given feedback. I think if we could get as much of that in the recommendation or any packet, it takes away all those questions and it's going to get faster to, to approval. So just to reiterate, two things, getting everybody's feedback to submit would be good. And two, having a plan of execution. I think the two things that would make this even more robust and more strong going forward. But I do agree with what's recommended and the thoughtfulness that went into the plan. So I would be in favor of approving it.
Just looking down the line, any comments? Commissioner Padilla?
Yeah, I appreciate all the work that was put into it. I think a key word here is balance, which we've touched on in, in our discussion. And not to make it any longer, I'm in favor of, of Plan A. I think Commissioner Quincy's recommendations are a good one. But I think it is imperative as, as a city that we keep this industrial core and help it to, to grow with the community in the context of the community. So I'm supportive.
Commissioner Miranda?
Okay. Once again, thank you for all of your work. I really appreciate it. And I really appreciate understanding and learning about this neighborhood. And that's it. I think, I think it's a good, a good plan.
Sarah?
I want to start off by acknowledging the efforts of the Cahill team. It was really good working with you guys and I really appreciated the opportunity that I got. A lot of effort has been put into this and there have been a lot of changes and growth that occurred. And then in regards to the school population issue, I think it would be, not sure if this is a school district role or if it's the role of the school district or the city. But I think it is very important to communicate with students at the school, whether it is a survey or working with the leadership teams such as student senate or student council about just how they feel about class sizes and, class sizes and either increasing or decreasing those as a result of the housing increase from Cahill. And it's also important to communicate with teachers about how they feel about workload and how it's been affected as class sizes have grown through these past years. Um, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Look this way. Commissioner Strauss?
Yeah, just kind of quickly, I, to, to the presenting team, you know, yeah, very nice job. I, I think, being familiar with, with this, I mean, for some time, but I really liked the, the points as you made. And I, and I says, just starting, why the, what's the purpose of having this plan? And I think you, you addressed that in a sort of like, what, what use, you know, this district holds. I mean, I think that story was a wonderful way to, you know, kick this off. And, and then how the plan is to be used, you know, very important. And then you addressed the concerns, infrastructure, and then certainly schools is the one that's kind of, has been out there. And I, David, I think your, your summary was as good of an explanation of how that should be thought of and as addressed. It made all the sense in the world to me about the implications, you know. So I think that was an important point. And, and like I said, I think that option A is certainly the, to me, the most favorable one. So good work. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Real quick, to echo what everybody else says so far, I, I support this. I, you know, it's the only place in Edina that certain types of businesses can exist and start and grow. It's pretty much the only place in Edina that certain types of people who work in certain types of industries can work. There really aren't that many other places. And we want those types of businesses and people working in our, in our city. I think you did a nice job, point touching on preserving the space and allowing it to just basically, in some ways, exist as it always has been, is critical for maintaining the diversification of the city's economy. And if it goes, it's not going back. So I think those points were echoed, but I really do believe those strongly. It's kind of interesting, I hadn't spent much time in Cahill before this came up, but I spent some time there, you know, obviously after you guys brought it to our working group and then before this hearing. And I was struck by, one, it's not very big, it's actually smaller than I, than I thought. It's really not a very big place, and so even more reason to preserve what's there. And then, two, it didn't strike, strike me as being deteriorated at all. It's vibrant, there's a lot of business happening there. It just didn't have that impression, felt like there was energy, including a lot of familiar businesses that we've probably all interacted with, just as Edina residents. So maybe it's not perfect or whatever, but I do appreciate all your work, and I agree with the plan. So, thanks.
All right, so maybe I'll come at this from a little bit of a different angle, since there's a lot of consensus around favoring Plan A so far. But as I thought about this, and as I've thought about this, as we did the work session, and I've expressed to other people, right? So I'm an engineer and I'm in the tech field. And when I think about this, and so this, this plan, this area hits home for me because it's so important, so unlike anything else we have in Edina, right? You know, as I think about like, what does the city want to work towards and what do we want to preserve? We want to have a more diverse Edina, right? But part of that diversity and part of the important thing about that diversity is also providing a diversity of opportunity as well, right? So not just service industry and not just working from home, right? The reality is, for many millions of Americans, right, you cannot operate a lathe from your house. You don't operate a CNC from your house. You don't build and work on robotics from your house, right? You know, I can continue, right? You don't build N95 masks from your house. So these are important things to have there. People like to have desirable places to work, inner near desirable places to live, right? And if we lose the zoning for industrial and push those areas further outside the city, then really what you get is, what we've seen in my, in industry, is we have a hard time actually attracting talent, because you've pushed it so far out of the city limit now, that nobody wants to work or nobody wants to live there or commute an hour, hour and a half, two, three more, to where you've actually finally said, yep, we're going to keep this industrial, right? So I think it's very important for Edina to keep this one, two little 2% area, very tiny, to preserve it, to, you know, keep it as an opportunity for different types of jobs rather than just work from home. We have a lot of discussion about the future of work and what people are due, but again, you know, I stress that the reality isn't that everybody can call in from, from their office, right? People have to physically go to work still, and we need to provide areas for that to happen, outside of just Southdale District and whatnot. So that's why I favor, you know, option A, right? Coming at it from my experience in my industry, see it very important. And I'll also mention, right, something I'm very passionate about is, like, exposing and increasing for youth opportunities for STEM and skilled trades. And I think about this as being something, you know, if you make this more visible and keep it, right, what value that provides to any of our elementary schools, our middle school, EHS, that can take a field trip or go see, right, in an automation company that's based in the Cahill District, right? I think, again, keeping these things, not pushing them outside of our area view is very important. So all that adds up to, you know, I think this is, was well done. I'm not in favor of, you know, significantly altering 18 months of progress and 18 months of work. I think we arrived on a good conclusion. And so, yeah, I'd be inclined to vote for option A.
Thank you. Seems like we got a lot of consensus here. Oh, yeah, Commissioner Miranda, I'm going to pass to you. I'll wrap up.
Thank you. So I want to start out by saying there seems to be a misconception that, that anybody here is, is pushing for reducing the, the industrial zoning of this area. Nobody here, as far as I know, is, is pushing for that. So I understand and agree with the reasons for keeping the industrial area where it is and keeping the, the current size of it, or most of it, the way it's presented here. My concern has been that, the biggest concern I have is, well, I have many concerns, but one of the concerns is, is the business, the commercial district, what do they call it, the business node, you know, which is single-story buildings with surface parking lots. And it's a relatively small part of this, but nonetheless, you know, like I said, we have, we have no place to build. We're not building apartment complexes in single-family home neighborhoods, right? I don't see that happening. And, you know, we have to use every little postage stamp size plot that we can. So I think having that zoned, I mean, it feels very 1970s to have this area zoned as a, as a business district. It just, it just doesn't fit with anything that I know of. So, so that's my main point in terms of where we need, you know, that should be like we have in every other district in Edina in our, in our comprehensive plan, is mixed-use buildings with, you know, housing on top and then, you know, businesses on the first floor. That's perfectly consistent with what's there today, in terms of the number of businesses. So the business node is my biggest concern in terms of that. In terms of addressing the Climate Action Plan, you know, we have this implementation matrix that's shown in there, and it really talks more about, the implementation matrix has infrastructure information and ways to make the roads better and basically connect them together, but it's not just for bikes and pedestrians, it's, it's for vehicles. And I think that's a huge mistake. I think that, that's a lost opportunity. But when we talk about aspirations, all the climate goals are in aspirations, not in implementation. And so I, I just feel like we're not, the, the few mentions we have of, of, you know, bicycle network or whatever, there is one section in the implementation matrix, but I think, you know, the way that we figure out what that is, the way we figure out whether that's improving or not, is reduction VMT, which is what the Climate Action Plan calls for. And that's not mentioned anywhere in here, and that, that really needs to be what the, what the quantitative change is, is reduction VMT, because nothing else really matters. Also, when you look at bike and pedestrian connections, I mean, you compare this to the Southdale Plan, where we're breaking up these big blocks, and here we're not really doing that. And no, we don't want to put streets there the way we do in, in Southdale, but we could put, you know, bikeways and walkways. And I, I just think that these, these lots are just way too big, and it's an easy way, like on the eastern side of it, to just split that in half and have a bikeway down the center. So I think that's a huge lost opportunity there. I mean, in terms of how this city just really de-emphasizes bicycling, I mean, the city of Bloomington had, had feedback in one of the documents, basically saying that in the high-density employment area and the industrial core area, you know, modeling for bicycling should be higher than, than what the city has modeled. So it's like, what we need here is a village, and we're designing a 1970s suburb, right? It just, it just doesn't feel right to me. It doesn't feel like it fits in with any of the other small-area plans or even the Southdale Plan that we have. So you may or may not know, but the National Weather Service announced today, or maybe it was yesterday, I think it was today, that we've already set a record for the number of air quality warnings that we've had this year. And it's June. There's a heat dome over Texas and the south of the US, and it's moving further north. And, you know, we're, we're reaching temperatures that we have never reached before in this country, or, and this is happening around the world. People are wearing masks, not because of COVID, but because of the air quality. And this, this plan just seems very unambitious. And so, you know, it's just very meek when we need something that's very bold. You know, I feel like we're Nero, Rome is literally burning around us, and we're just making minor changes that I don't think are nearly what we need to have. So I'm not going to recommend anything from this for the city council. Thank you.
Since this is also a discussion, any, does that, people want to discuss anything back and forth, or more just comments?
Just a comment on the, because I know we, we had a back and forth about this at the work session, was around the, the size of the blocks and, and breaking that up and whatnot. And, you know, to raise that point, I think, is, doesn't fit with a planned industrial area. You say it's very different than our other planning, you know, other plans that we have for other areas, because this is very different use, right? We consider green space, the size of blocks, right? We, we want to consider these things in the context of like the hierarchy of needs, right? So I'll think about, I think about, if I were going to work there, or if I were looking for a job right now, the first thing on my priority would be, is there a place to work? Does it pay me well? Can I support my family? Does it provide me with good benefits? Not, do I have to walk further to get to the front door? Or do I have Jimmy John's within walking distance, right? So I can't get a job if a place doesn't have a sizable footprint to locate itself, right? If we break these up into small blocks for industrial, it doesn't really make sense here, right? To me, that comment doesn't really make a lot of sense. You know, breaking that up in Southdale District and stuff, that makes a lot of sense where we want to have increased walkability, but this is really a jobs hub. And in order to keep manufacturing and industrial, light industrial there, you need to have sizable footprints for some of those areas, right? And to say that we need to be divvying these lots up, then you're going to decrease the amount of opportunities, the amount of people that are really interested in developing this area, right? And I don't think that's appropriate. So I just don't understand how that jives with, again, the plan. It's an industrial area that doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to me. So I don't know, that's a fair criticism of this opportunity, of this plan.
Maybe just to add, oh, sorry, I'll jump in real quick. You know, one thing that's been a common thread between all this really, and you brought up to begin with, is there hasn't been any contention with the industrial core, right? I mean, everyone wants to preserve that. I, I also haven't heard any shared sentiment of like, we really should protect this office that flanks part of it. And I think, you know, you favored option B over option A. If you were going to favor any of the options, I think that's a fair point, as you have a highway that's right there and to provide other opportunities. One thing that Cahill Plan doesn't show is, to the west of the industrial core is all residential as well. You know, the north side is residential, not the south side. But there is some key context into what is around this district that's not necessarily contained flanking it. So it would be interesting to hear what others have, just thoughts on the future of specifically the office zoning. And is, is that more of your, your contention with the plan? Or is it, it's not really the industrial core aspect, is it?
No.
More of what's flanking the?
I'm not talking about changing the core at all. In fact, you know, you know, it was a gross exaggeration to say chopping up every property into blocks or whatever. What I mentioned specifically was, in the, in what, in the future will be zoned as the office district, is cutting that in half, not cutting the, the, the industrial area in half. So, and then keeping, you know, making it mixed-use in everywhere else. That's not, you know, that's not the industrial, industrial area. I'm not talking about changing anything out in the plan about the industrial area. That is totally out of scope of what I'm suggesting.
I guess maybe one question I just have to kind of better inform that discussion, but maybe for the, the team, but, you know, option A was honed in on, because it's protected business, so office kind of jives with that more than housing. Was option B out of A through D kind of the second most desired? Or was it B, C, D? And was there talk about B having housing? And some of this context was right before, I think, the adoption of the comprehensive plan update, it was like the month before that, someone did propose a redevelopment of one of those offices, office buildings to turn into residential, you know? Because there was at least development interest there, and for the most part, there was some shared, you know, based off of public comment as well as the planning commission, you could kind of see it being right there on the freeway. And so does this, does this limit the flexibility of that? Would that have to come through more of a PUD? Because currently, the comprehensive plan does have that side office residential, right? The, the east side of 100? And so we would be changing it back to just office?
So this, a lot of this east, let's see, does this point in? So a lot of this east side of the district is currently guided off. So this, like, kind of lighter purple would be keeping it guided as office, not office residential. This, the mixed-use district is proposed to go to office residential, because the density range and the uses are, are consistent with what we called for, for the mixed-use district. So we're sort of using the office residential designation as like kind of the parent category with more specificity provided in the Cahill District Plan, if that makes sense. But this, this is all, this, this lighter purple, it's currently guided for office, and it's, the plan is proposing to keep it that way.
Okay, yeah, maybe it's hard to distinguish, yeah, it is office. Some of those colors look the same on one of the other maps. Shows office residential, but that's actually Pentagon Park.
Yep.
Area, okay. I guess, just context to that, I mean, was that, was that one of the areas that was discussed to kind of bring it down, just so other people understand more the basis of preserving the office? Is it more for complementary use with industrial? What was the goal of preserving office? Because I, I haven't heard much sentiment up here or elsewhere of, let's keep these office buildings with huge parking lots.
Yeah, you're right. And one thing we discussed, you know, unlike the industrial uses, which aren't allowed in other places, I mean, office is allowed in a lot of other places. So that's why I think the other scenarios did look at allowing more mixed-use, because one thing we heard from the office owner, the property owners and other developers is that this may not be the most attractive area for office going forward. Southdale would be much more attractive, because office tenants want to be closer to restaurants, entertainment, retail, things like that.
And so since option A was proposed and recommended, I guess, it looks like we have quite a bit of different use flanking the perimeter of this district, except there, you know, where it kind of remains the office. I mean, why was that intended to, to try to stay the same compared to the industrial core, when you're saying the sentiment and some of the feedback from the owners as well as others is likely prompting it going a different direction?
Yeah, I think, I think that largely came down to just how much additional area the working group was comfortable allowing additional housing. That was a big part of the discussion.
Okay. I guess that's, I don't know if there's other context, but I think the context is key.
Yeah, I think that's, Addison's comment is accurate. And also, I would say that our framing was less around an industrial area than an employment center. And an employment center can have industrial uses and office uses, and they will typically, but not always, serve different employment segments, provide different kinds of jobs for Edina residents, or, you know, anybody, but for, for the population. So it's not, their, their common denominator is that they are employment centers within the city rather than otherwise. That answers your question.
Yeah, sure does.
Can we, can we bring it back then to, right, this study that was done, this small group survey, right? They directly addressed that piece, right? The high-density office area is, is addressed.
The high density office area is is addressed in that survey group. The findings, right, the first thing in here, high density office area, the location and access are fantastic. The city should embrace this as a place for jobs. It's a great location for professional offices, right? Goes back to what you just said, right? This is, I think, a lot of the discussion was guided around this is a job hub, not just an industrial hub, right? I certainly leaned on the industrial piece as we went down, but I mean, the the job hub is or the job piece is very important to what we're discussing here, right? And you don't get a lot of diversity of jobs from first floor coffee shops that are at the bottom of apartment buildings. You just don't, right? And so and this makes sense to have, and who wants to have a balcony overlooking the industrial area too, right? To ring it with with offices, I think, is also makes sense, right? And that, again, was pointed to in the small group finding in terms of noise complaints, proximity to loading docks, et cetera, and stuff like that, right? To ring it with office helps kind of shield it from some of the residential as well.
And I guess, you know, that's a context, you know, the the west and northern perimeter and that northeast are going to be residential or are existing now. And so flexibility was kind of key discussion point, like preserve, I mean, it's always preserve the industrial core, but maintain some flexibility in that, but certainly surrounding it. So, I mean, there are, you know, there is the zoning of office residential. So just trying to understand better why that was completely ruled out, because that still could accommodate office as it is, but allow some flexibility a little more easily. So it seems like there is a pretty firm foot put down for that recommendation to just limit the amount of housing in general in the area, not necessarily there particularly, just directed in certain areas for now. And I guess, as we know, with any of these plans, there's a comprehensive update every 10 years, we're expected to re-review these areas. And that certainly would be an area, I would say, we look at again 10 years from now or for the next comprehensive plan update.
I mean, I feel like we've kind of addressed it a little bit, though, right? We've all talked about the tide of development in favor of residential everywhere we look. I mean, the equation, the math adds up. Would you rather build an office building or would you rather build the Fred in terms of making money, you know, every year? I mean, you're going to, if you're competing office versus mixed versus mixed residential, your residential is going to win out over time, right? So that's, to me, I mean, again, you have you almost have to say, no, you can't put residential here if you're going to preserve anything.
Yeah, I I don't know. I feel like that, you know, you have residential surrounding other pieces of it and propos.
Right, other pieces of it. And I think that's an important piece, right? As, sorry, I got to remember the name, as Steve said, and he came up and said, right, that that northeast corner, right, that's very, right, that's a great inclusion in this plan, right? And that makes sense, right? But it doesn't all have to be that, you know, like corner B there or like corner A, right? I mean, to have this be a little bit mixed up, I mean, I think we reached a good balance in plan A in what we came to, so.
I certainly do, too. It's just, so it's important to continue to challenge it how we got there. And so, I mean, it feels like we have not complete consensus up here. Just trying to understand why and where that can make sense. Do you have something else?
I'm going to jump in because I had to drive to the deep end of that dead end probably 1,500 times. And I got to say, that wasted a lot of gas. And I'm not the only one who did it. So I think there is some breaking up of the blocks that even recommended their connections. I don't think breaking up the big industrial, but it's not all industrial. Minnesota made, you know, brings in hockey kids all night long. So I do think there has to be some changes in the streets in this neighborhood. So I think it's not all one or the other on the east side or, so I think we've got to be open to some of that. And, I mean, there's no reason why the office can't get a little denser, can it? It's just the parking issue that can't be underground, and that's a water.
Well, they did address that in the findings, right? So there's a key opportunity for the office area is the conversion of parking areas to other uses, including retail, hotel, medical office, residential, right? So it's, but they do, there is a desire to reduce the amount of parking, right? So I think the concern about it just being parking lots, you know, as far as the eye can see, I don't think the businesses there want that either.
Well, then it would have to be a parking structure. It can't go underground.
Right, and I'm saying, I think the the general consensus from the businesses in that would be located in that area is that they don't necessarily want big parking lots surrounding them either, right?
Yeah, so, you know, the reason I brought up the Star Tribune article, you know, talking about downtowns and and central business districts is because central business districts is a, you know, 20th century invention. So before that, in 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 cities like old cities like New York, Paris, whatever, or even little tiny villages, there were no districts, right? There were no, I mean, there were no, the zoning wasn't like very specific because there was no zoning. And so, I mean, yeah, you had regions of the city that were did things more than others, but you could have an apartment building next to an office building. I mean, many cities have this. And so when you create zoning like this, where you split things up, which is very, you know, 20th century, 1970s, whatever you want to call it, then people have to drive everywhere. You know, you can't walk anywhere because everything is a car drive away. And so even if we took the eastern side of this and just said, the whole thing's mixed use, sorry, the whole thing's mixed use, then, you know, developers decide based on what's most appropriate there in terms of, you know, having people live there and and, you know, what's most valuable there, they decide which properties become housing and which ones become office. It's like, the whole idea of like separating stuff is what got us into this mess in the first place. And the less separating we do, and again, I get the industrial, you know, I get it, but everything outside that, it's like, I don't understand why it's so split up. It's just, we don't need to do it anymore, and it's not something that we really want to do, I don't think.
Do you want to have any other thoughts on that specifically? I was just going to ask you, so like, what would you think would be better? Like, from a zoning perspective, setting the industrial core aside and talking about the entire periphery, all the other parts of this that we're looking at? I just, I'm curious, like, what?
Right, why do we have, why do we have a business node? I mean, that sounds.
What would be a better?
Keep the whole thing multi-use. Why, why are we separating it? I don't understand. Doesn't make any sense. And then when you have, because, you know, again, we even if you talk about parking, you know, I mean, what's her name? Jane Jacobs in 1962, you know, life and death of great American cities, or death and life of great American cities. You know, you look at the business district in Manhattan, you know, downtown, and, you know, everybody needs to go there because it's just Wall Street and and associated businesses, and then everybody leaves at night, right? And we're trying to get away from that, where if we had shared parking, for example, and there were a multitude of kind of buildings around it, then it wouldn't all be everyone moving from this parking lot to this parking lot, depending on the time of day, right? So it's just making it all, you know, mixed use. I mean, because we're not going to be changing single-family home areas in Adana, right? And, you know, urbanists talk about, oh, let's have towers everywhere. That's not going to happen, right? So where do we do this? We only have so many places we can do this. And how do we do it in a way that's sustainable, that allows people to conduct all their business within walking distance? Because that's, that's sustainability is the goal. The Climate Action Plan, that's what it's all about. Reducing VMT means you don't have to get into a car to do anything. So, I mean, we looked at this at the the Grand View, you know, we, the where the city split the city-owned lot into housing and then a restaurant and a park. And it's like, you know, this is not the sort of thing that we were doing for the past 10 years, and now suddenly we're doing it. So I'm a little confused. It's not really sustainable.
I guess one question I have, back to the team, because you can read through all that stuff, but what were some of the core ingredients of why, why limit the housing specifically on that east side? I mean, the consideration of the schools, consideration of overinflating value of the peripheral that bleeds into making industrial less affordable? I mean, what are some of the other key ingredients of why you won't allow multi-use? Like Commissioner Miranda mentions around that, specifically the east side.
So you're looking for some feedback on that?
Yeah.
Housing growth was one. That is clearly among the working group, something that there's a lot of concern about that. Not exclusively based on the school district, but mostly, I would say, to characterize the feedback from the working group. And the second piece of it is conflict. I think there was a sense among not just the working group, but a lot of people that we interacted with through the process that, and this actually came up with the city council working session some time ago, where the the sentiment was, if you can find some way to add mixed use, that's great, but let's, let's, let's try to reduce the impact. Let's try to reduce the conflict, minimize the conflict between industrial and multi-use. And I think that also drove the way the map looks at the end of the day. Apart from that, I can't think of any other.
I'd also add, those are all good points, but also real estate economics. The the balance of the of the uses that it will consider this area, and I think that's probably something that staff can assist with in terms of the development applications and the interest in the area, will tip the balance towards certain uses or another based on the the value of them. There, it's, mixed use is mixed use, but it's in the proposals you get won't necessarily have maintain a balance without some kind of divisions or or designations or requirements for certain mixing of uses, too. So that was a consideration, especially the strength of the multifamily residential housing market at this point, and and the interest that multifamily housing developers have expressed in this area due to past applications.
Thank you. And then I'll have other questions about that. I guess just my final comments on this is, I support this plan. I think one of the key pieces to understand is, you know, in an effort to be sustainable and achieve certain goals, even with the Climate Action Plan, I feel like there, there's always an element of preservation that is inherently sustainable over other items that tends not to be addressed as, what do I call you, ex-commissioner? Ex-commissioner alchire? Chair alchire of the plan. Yeah. There are these tides and these pressures to just continue to develop, and that's just inherently not sustainable. So how, you know, preservation in itself, you know, one, it, it, this is different, but you want to build things that will last, and you don't want to have to change those things continually or in a short amount of time. I think the key here is this conservative approach to preserve this area. And I guess my concern and why I support option A is the closer you allow some of that mixed use while I support its function of blending, you're going to have some real estate effects as you build these nicer, more residential things right next to industrial cores that'll inflate their tax and make it inherently less sustainable to maintain this industrial core. So in some way, I I support this relatively conservative approach to keep what we have. And there's, there's something like you, you said about, it doesn't look deteriorated. It's just some of these buildings are older, but that allows them to be more sustainable for different uses and change in the future. So we have too much parking in some areas, too little in others, but it's better to have a little too much parking if the use changes, which the zoning of the industrial allows that flexibility. You could have a brewery move in now, you want all that parking. So I think, I just think it's been a job very well done, and I think it was good to show the different options. And I personally was torn between A and B for the the reasons Commissioner Miranda mentioned, but I would support option B of like the multi-use flanking that side over another. But I understand the conservative approach to maintain that industrial core at all costs at this point. And the only thing I would probably add echoes Commissioner Smith, what I was bringing up before is, when it comes to execution, I've seen the city fall short because we have the laundry list of priorities and a lot of things that fall on the city's shoulders. But if if I were an existing business owner or worked there, I would be excited to see this plan. Most other small area plans are like redeveloping your property into something totally different. This is preserving what's there. So I think in an, in a way to continue that excitement and build that ownership, we should really have a prescribed path as part of the execution to form a business district that has a roundtable, something like that, an executive committee that helps really advance this plan as well as, you know, you don't need the city to kind of guide some of that creativity. You want it to just, you you want them to bring about the change that they see fit, you know? So if if we're trying to encourage that change of enhancement, not redevelopment entirely, it'd be nice to see, you know, an execution step that is more defined as to forming some sort of district or body that helps guide, you know, some of those implementation strategies, bring the ownership to that industrial core or the business district as a whole, instead of leaving it fully on the city's shoulders. I think we would start to see change quicker and in the areas that, you know, are really identified by those owners as priorities, where maybe us as a city, like, we want to send sidewalks through here, you know, they might really not like that conflict and might think of some other creative thing like a circular bus to just get people and things out of the way in different, different aspects. So that would be probably my only, you know, recommended condition. And again, these are to, for us, it's a condition of approval, but it's a, it's a recommendation to the city council. So they they can take that, consider it, implement different changes of their own that they want to see, I guess, codified. So any other thoughts people have of, and it sounds like we have consensus for the most part to support moving this forward. Is there consensus around other conditions of approval? Or do people think of just moving it forward as a whole without those execution steps?
I don't think we necessarily put any conditions on it at this point. I mean, it's a large document with a lot of good information in it, and I think the thing that everybody agrees on is preserving the core, preserving the industrial core. And we have another comprehensive plan coming up where we can kind of talk about some of those edges, because you even mentioned that, you know, it was that core that was the meatier piece of this whole study. So the only thing, you know, if we wanted to emphasize that industrial core, I think that's, that's fine, but I don't know if I'd put any conditions on this plan at this point.
Any other thoughts?
So yours, yours is a recommendation, though, right? You just said that add a recommendation rather than a condition.
So our, I mean, our approval with a condition isn't binding in any way. It serves as a recommendation. So if we add a condition, it more so serves as a recommendation to the city council to either apply a condition of their own, you know, it wouldn't hold up an approval or anything. I just personally have seen those implementation stages fly by. You see short term, five years, midterm, 10 years, and many of these places where we've done this, those have already happened and nothing has occurred. So that, my, my fear is just the execution of some of those strategies without either a, a team that's going to advance those, because it's a very disparate.
The condition is about.
This person owns this, this person owns that.
Sorry, so I'm maybe the condition is about creating an implementation plan.
More so the semblance of a business district and or an execution team.
Okay.
To advance implementation strategies that's more embodied. -to advance implementation strategies that's more embodied by the area instead of city people, economic development people, all these disparate groups. Because I've seen it happen, it's like, you're responsible for this, and then you follow up, it's like no one's done anything for five years. You know, so how do, how do we make sure things are getting done? And I don't want that to just fall entirely on the planning commission or someone else to follow up.
And my apologies maybe because it's already 10, but you jumped from the little circulator to the condition, and I was like, the condition is the circulator? Sorry.
Yeah, no, that would be it. And I don't know if Commissioner Smith, do you have anything to articulate on that?
No, I would agree. I think you said it well. If we add the condition that we approve Plan A, with the condition that a recommendation or a plan be put together of what the body would be that would advance this would be, would be ideal, just so that we don't lose that momentum on this plan. How do I say that more articulate?
That sounded good. To be clear though, option A is embodied in this plan. So that is the recommendation. If we recommend approval of the plan, it recommends option A. Well, I'd welcome a motion so we can keep this meeting moving and sorry to keep it dragging on.
I will motion to recommend that the city council adopt the Cahill District Area Plan and associated comprehensive plan amendments and authorize submission to the Met Council with the recommendation that we explore how implementation will be done, whether that be through, you know, assembled body of Cahill District or other business leaders.
I second.
All in favor, we can do a roll, roll call for this one.
Commissioner Feld?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Nay.
Commissioner Padilla?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Bornstein?
Aye.
Chair Bennett?
Aye.
So the motion carries. Yep, seven to one. Congratulations on all your hard work and look forward to hearing what the council has to say. Thank you for everything. And we have two more public hearings. So thank you everyone for sticking it tonight, sticking through this. Well, this one is now B 2310, variance request at 4545 77th Street West, Drool and Moose. Turn it over to Commissioner Addison. If you have bathroom break or something, you can.
We got a pause, you want to go?
Let's, let's take a five-minute break. All right, five minutes is up, and now we're back. All right, turn it over. Addison, take us away.
Oh, Drool and Moose, they're a gourmet chocolate company. They recently acquired this property and proposed to use, there's an existing about 20,000 square foot building on the, on the site that they proposed to use as an office warehouse with a small accessory retail space. And it's the retail component that is what's triggering the need for the variance. So here's a look at the location of the property, just on the south side of 77th Street, located between Highway 100 and France Avenue. As I mentioned, there's an existing 20,000 square foot, single-story building onsite, other surrounding uses are primarily office and employment uses. There is a preschool on the east side, and then to the south, there's a hotel. That southern boundary of the property is also the border with the city of Bloomington. So here's a look at the site. It is zoned planned industrial, which does allow for office warehouse use as a principal use. It also allows for retail as a permitted accessory use under certain conditions, which I'll talk a little bit more about here in a second. The comprehensive plan guides this property as office residential, which allows for office uses, multifamily residential, as well as some limited industrial when it is kind of a fully enclosed use, and also retail. So in kind of looking at the overall scope of the applicant's business, we do find that is consistent with the land use guidance in the comprehensive plan. Just some site photos here to kind of give you some context of the property. So this is looking at the north facade and the west, and then here from the east and the south. Now looking north from the property is the Pentagon Office Park, and then looking west is another single-story kind of industrial office building. Looking east is that preschool, and then towards the south, towards Bloomington, you can see it's kind of well screened there from that hotel. This is the property survey. So again, 20, about a 20,000 square foot building, the applicants aren't proposing any changes to the footprint of the building at this time. They do have a pretty large existing paved area that they're showing proof of parking for up to 47 stalls. By code, they're only required to have about 21 stalls for this use, so parking isn't really an issue. They do plan to have that lot restripped here pretty soon. This is just a look at their floor plan. So again, primarily office, so this is flipped from the survey, so the front of the building is now here on the left side. But towards the front here, primarily office use, and then kind of warehouse storage towards the back. And here, you see there where they're proposing that 1,006 square foot retail space that would be accessible from the exterior of the building. And then just some renderings they provided showing some small improvements to the exterior of the building with some proposed signage. And then getting into the variance request. So in the planned industrial district, the city code lists the following as an accessory use. It says, "Within buildings having office space comprising not less than 40,000 square feet of gross floor area, 10% of the gross floor area may be occupied by retail uses allowed in the PCD-1 and PCD-2 districts. If the accessory uses are accessible only from the interior of the principal building and have no signs or displays relative to it visible from the outside of the principal building." So the proposed retail use, you know, it is a permitted use in the PCD-1, PCD-2 districts. The variance is required kind of for three reasons here. One is that the, the building itself is only 20,151 square feet, so it's 19,849 less than the 40,000 square foot requirement. The proposed retail portion is 5% of the overall building, but is approximately 29% of the space when accounting for just kind of the office and retail space, which exceeds that 10% threshold. If, I'll just kind of go back here. Historically, it sounds like this has just been interpreted to be a 40,000 square foot building. But I just, we're just kind of calling it out here because it does say, "Within buildings having office space," and not all their space in the building is going to be for office. So I just kind of call that out here. And then the third component is the retail space is proposed to have direct access from the exterior of the building. Minnesota statutes and Edina zoning ordinance require that the following conditions must be satisfied affirmatively to grant a variance. So number one is that the variance will relieve practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use from complying with the ordinance requirement. First, you know, we think it's, it's totally reasonable that a gourmet chocolate company would want to sell their product directly to consumers from their site, so that's completely reasonable. Just in kind of looking at this section of the code, we think that it was likely intended to kind of prevent standalone retail uses from outcompeting those industrial uses and kind of forcing, also again, kind of related to our last discussion, it's intended to kind of protect industrial businesses. And so the code doesn't really account for this type of a situation. It's totally reasonable for lots of other types of uses allowed in the industrial district to want to have a retail space. Breweries often sell merchandise, churches sometimes will have a bookstore, you know, those are just some examples of other types of uses we allow in the industrial district, and it's totally reasonable for them to want to have some sort of small accessory retail component to their business. So two is that there are circumstances that are unique to the property, not common to every similarly zoned property, and that are not self-created. So this variance is partly just due to the size of the existing building, which isn't a condition that was created by the property owner. And we would also just point out that not, while, while I just pointed out some examples, not every business in the, every type of business in the industrial district is going to desire to have a retail space. And again, this is also a little unique in that the, the retail component is associated with the permitted industrial use. This is a separate entity, which is sort of what this section of the code seems like it's trying to, to prevent. And then lastly, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. So retail uses are really prevalent in this area, both to the east and west, kind of in the Southdale District and Pentagon Village. In this area, as I pointed out earlier, is guided for office residential, so it talks about this area transitioning towards a more mixed use in the future where retail uses are likely to be more prevalent. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the variance based on those findings outlined in your staff report there, and subject to the following conditions, the parking lot must be striped by no later than December 31st, 2023, and comply with all city code requirements. A six-month extension may be granted by the community development director. And I've already spoken with the applicant, they plan to have the lot striped within, within a month or two. And then number two, the retail space shall be limited to 1,006 square feet as depicted on the plans included in the June 28, 2023 planning commission packet. And then just to kind of payback off this application, you know, we, in kind of looking at this, kind of identified this provision of the code as problematic. And so another thing we're recommending is that as part of next year's work plan, we add something to kind of look at this section of the code and take a look at revisiting it, because it's very likely that, you know, this type of restriction could prevent other types of businesses from locating any Edina that we might want in Edina. So we'll be happy to answer any questions, otherwise the applicant is here as well, and I know they plan to say a few words too, so.
Great presentation. Any questions? Commissioner Strauss?
Yeah, Mr. Strauss, thank you. Yeah, your last point about adding this as a kind of a work item is exactly the sort of, when these things come up, what we should be doing. You know, I know, a favorite one before was requiring basements, you know, and it just happened to be, you know, in the requirements. But just, if this building was 40,000 square feet, they would, and they were going to still do the same, same thing, there wouldn't be any, that would be fine, it's just that.
And if the door to the retail space was only accessible from the inside of the building, then yes, which seems rather silly. But again, the intent, I think what, what the code was trying to allow is large multi-tenant office buildings that want to have like a little convenience retailer or a little cafe that only serves the people in that building, that's what it was intending to allow. And so it's sort of an oversight in that this isn't really addressed, I guess.
No, and I just maybe direct this to Carrie, this is absolutely something we should, you know, get on our, our work plan kind of thing.
That was the strategy when we were teeing this up, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Feld?
Speaking of climate change, my thought, so I've got a question for staff, and I emailed you earlier today about the crosswalk, because people will be driving here and parking in the parking lot to come to this one single retail establishment. And I noticed right there is the pre-K.
Yeah, if it's like an early childhood, yeah, preschool.
Yes, they have some private kindergarten too. I looked up their website. And then the Fred Richards is just on the other side of Pentagon Park, and the Fred is just west, right? And there's going to be some, so it'd be nice if people could walk here. And if, if people can walk here, they need a crosswalk. And the nearest crosswalk is 550 feet away. So I guess my question is, for the city, can we get a crosswalk? And what's the average speed on the street? Do we know?
Is it?
I know.
It's 30. 30 is the speed limit.
Okay.
But I think, like we discussed, or, you know, when you emailed me today and responded saying that, you know, currently there is no sidewalk on the north side.
Yeah.
And, and we don't, I guess, necessarily know when that's going to happen. It could be added as redevelopment occurs. That's what's happening with the Fred, they're adding sidewalks. So if other property on the north side develops, then a sidewalk could be added, or the city could potentially proactively do it if there is money and it's identified as a priority. But as of right now, that's why there's no crosswalk there is because there's no sidewalk. In fact, there's a retaining wall there, so there'd be really nowhere to go at this point.
Yeah.
But I totally agree with the point, long-term, as this transitions to a more mixed use district, improving the walkability will be key.
We need a street plan, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sounds like an important yet future issue. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. Oh, go ahead, Quincy.
So just a quick question on the, the difference between principal use, conditional use, and accessory use. Just kind of talk through that a little bit. I think I get it, but just walk us through those three different use types.
Sure. Yeah, so just the predominant- Yeah, so just the predominant use of the building is going to be office and warehouse. The accessory is just kind of a small, it's 5% of the overall building. So the code allows that as a permitted accessory use. So you couldn't have a standalone retail building. Retail is not allowed as a principal use, so if someone wanted to come in and just open like a retail store, that would not be permitted. But if it's accessory to an otherwise permissible use in the industrial district, then it can be allowed under those conditions. And then, you know, conditional uses are things that they require, it comes before you. They're considered permitted uses, but you can put conditions on them, if that makes sense.
Gotcha. So with the accessory use, it's based on size. Like you can't say, "My business is primarily a warehouse that makes up 10% of the property size, but then the rest of it being retail." That's just not how it works, right?
Right, right. I think if 90% of the building was going to be for retail and only 10% for warehouse, then we'd say that, that retail's kind of more the principal use there.
Just elaborate a little bit more on the type of activity on the site. So I know we have, you know, potentially 5% retail, X percent office, and then X percent warehouse. Could you just talk a little bit more about what's going to happen in the actual building?
I might leave that to the applicants to talk about a little bit when it's their turn.
Okay. And I think you talked about the PID ordinance, right, that it's really for, if you have like a large office building and workers want to go somewhere to eat, they just go down to the retail space, hopefully a restaurant in the building or something, kind of like the Skyway in downtown Minneapolis, right? Like, there's Skyway restaurants that serves the buildings in the area, and it's all internal. That's kind of what the PID is for, this particular one?
Well, I think what this particular provision of the industrial, of the code is trying to regulate is that, you know, sometimes you'll see a desire for large office buildings to want to have some sort of retail component in there, like on the first floor, like a little sandwich shop or something like that. And that sandwich shop is really just intended to kind of serve the other, the tenants of that building. So the, that's why it's typically, that like, that's why the code puts restrictions on saying it can't be accessible from the exterior and there shouldn't be signage, because it's, it's not supposed to be like a standalone restaurant that's really serving the broader community. It's intended to just kind of be this small accessory use to the office building.
Last question for now. So you kind of mentioned, you, you gave some examples where, I guess in this PID area, there was some kind of retail that was happening for certain types of businesses. Could you just talk about that a little bit more?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at the other types of uses that we allow as principal uses. You know, like I said, you go to any brewery, they're usually selling t-shirts, things like that. You know, gyms, which are common, athletic training typically will sell items or have like a cafe where you can get a shake or something like that. Places of worship often have, you know, bookstores, pet hospitals often will sell pet things. So there's a lot of uses that we allow in the industrial district that, under the current ordinance right now, are really not supposed to have any retail. So that's where there's kind of this gap in the code, is that we don't allow for this. And that's why, in addition, you know, to approving this variance, we're recommending that we look at this and maybe change that.
So with the, we're not supposed to allow the retail, this does allow for retail, but this has to serve the folks within the building. So the examples that you gave, could I go to that gym and just buy gym stuff and, and leave from the front door, or do I have to go be a member, join the gym, and enter it from the inside?
Right. What I'm saying is, right now, our code doesn't allow for retail uses that are kind of intended to serve the broader public. It's really only kind of speaking to retail uses that are sort of internal to an office building.
Gotcha. So with this particular situation, this is not the first business that has this challenge. We, we kind of allow it under the radar, let's just say it happens. So there's enough precedent here that we do it, so it's not something that, it just prompts us to now revisit that code some more going forward.
Correct.
That helps. All right, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. I think you've made a good case for changing the law and not a great case for granting a variance. I, I think the law, like, and this is where we've been struggling. I mean, our job as, as a quasi-judicial body is to apply the, the law and then make a factual finding if we think that the facts support granting an exception to the law. I'm super sympathetic with the idea that like, you know, some of these types of things should be permitted. When I look at the, the language of the ordinance, it's expressly forbidding this in this area. I mean, you have to have a building that's larger than 40,000 square feet to even start talking about whether you're permitted to do retail. And this clearly falls outside of that. And so when we're, I just, what's the, what I'm thinking about, what's the, what's the practical difficulty unique to this property that prevents compliance with the law as written, even if it's dumb law? And what's, what are the circumstances that are unique that aren't self-created? And it's not a situation like someone's foundation was built 50 years ago, one foot to, to the left of where it should be, or some guy built the driveway a long time ago and then someone changed the zoning later, you know? It just isn't feeling like this at all. It's feeling like a situation where the law is, is actually super clear that it is not allowed, and there aren't a lot of facts to support granting the exception. There's a lot of reasons to support changing the law. But that, you know, can you kind of clarify, is there a factual?
I think what we've tried to do is provide a pathway for you to approve this variance. I mean, I think, like, when you just kind of think about it, common sense standpoint, we look at this and we say, "This is totally appropriate." So what we've tried to do is provide a pathway for you to do that. If you don't feel, I guess, like this is a strong enough argument, but you want to support the variance, you all as a body could come up with additional findings that support approving it, if you're able to do that. Or, or you could come up with findings that it doesn't meet this and deny it. But as staff, we feel comfortable kind of with what's outlined here and, yeah, that's our recommendations for approval, so.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Can I, can I ask a question of the applicant, actually?
Yeah, yeah. All right, so, so we'll, we'll end our comment, our questions for now, and we'll welcome the applicant up to give a short presentation and then ask other question, or answer other questions. Yeah, yeah. Welcome, thank you.
Hi, thank you. We're excited to be in Edina. We've been looking for a building for a couple of years, so when we found it, we were very excited.
Sorry, could you?
I'm Amy.
Oh, yeah, there you go. All right.
I'm Amy Bustos, one of the co-owners of Drill &amp; Moose.
And I'm Missy Wetstrom, her sister.
Also an owner. So did you want to ask a question before we go into what we're doing? I know that somebody asked about the use.
Why don't you, why don't you go into what you're doing first and then we'll?
Okay, so we needed a warehouse because we have three retail stores and we were growing out of our space. And so we need, we've been looking for, like I said, two years to find a space where we could house our chocolate, our cardboard, everything for our packaging. We do not manufacture chocolate, so I know there was a question on the website on that page. So there is no odor or anything like that. So this is what our product is, is we bring in bulk chocolate and we package it, and that's what this building is going to be used for. So we have plans with the State Department of Agriculture so that we can have a food-safe room to package all of this food. And then this building lent itself to having this front, if we could, if you guys so see that it's a good fit. And after the discussion tonight, hoping that this is kind of a enhancing of Edina, maybe the multi-use and walking to retail. So anything you want to add?
No, I think you covered it. I mean, we've, we've been in business for 14 years. Started in Bloomington, expanded to Burnsville, then another store in St. Louis Park. In that 14 years, we've also grown our website business and become a destination shop. We have many cities requesting us to open stores there, but because of logistics and staffing, we've been pulling back a little bit. Edina for us has a special place because we had our screen printing shop there 25 years ago, just a block away. So we know the area, we're familiar with the demographic. We felt like it could, it could really enhance that area that's changing so much right now. The building is antiquated, it's one of those dinosaurs that we're ready, we're ready to dress it up, make it something that it is a destination shop for people that will enhance the area as well. So we're just, we're just really wanting, the warehouse was our top priority, the retail is also a priority because it brings so much for family experience and for out-of-town guests and, I don't know, we're just, we have a high demand for our product and not enough time or resources to expand to other cities fast enough. But Edina was close enough. We felt like it was, it worked with our other locations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You mind standing for some questions?
Oh, yeah, all right.
All right, here we go. Down there, Commissioner Padilla.
Thank you. Be nice to have you back in Edina. Just a couple of quick questions. How many employees will you have when you're, you know, fully, fully operational?
At that building or in general?
At that building.
At that building, I would say we'll probably max out at 12?
Yeah, in the high season.
In the high season, 12 to 15.
Okay. And the signage, is that going to be directly affixed to the front of the building and the top of the building? That's what it looks like, or?
Yeah, that, I mean, that was just kind of the dreamscape as the beginning piece when we were looking at potential of the building. It would be affixed to the building. There is now a freestanding sign on 77th Street. I don't think it's super effective because it's very, it's very low. So we haven't really developed our signage yet. We've got some fun options, some very original stuff that I'd like to bring to the signage committee at one point, but we've got some kind of fun stuff that we have planned.
And also, it said, I think it was in the narrative, you talked about people coming to socialize. So I'm curious as to whether or not there's eat-in. Can you sit, you sit down and eat or?
No, no, no. No, by socializing, what we've learned from our retail is it's so much more than just a retail. What we see with our stores, since they're small and cozy, people will meet friends there. We have free samples, so people are eating constantly. What happens is people are introduced to people because you hear them talking about chocolate, about somebody they know, about a sick friend, about something. So the interaction, it's more of an experience rather than retail. Amy and I have learned that there's so much need for that connection piece with retail. It's, it has nothing, I mean, this is chocolate and it's wonderful. But there's this also connective piece that regular retail, I think, misses the mark on. It wasn't anything we had planned to happen, but what has happened is new friendships, relationships, connections, people getting jobs because they're, start talking to people. So it becomes this interactive space that's about chocolate, but it's about this higher level of connection.
But just to clarify, the retail operation is counter-service? Is that?
People, but it's all prepackaged. So there's, it's not a typical candy store, so everything is, when you say counter-service.
I get, you know, you, you go and you find something you want, you bring it to the cash register.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Borstein.
I don't know where your current retail locations are. Do you mind just letting me know?
Yeah, Bloomington was our flagship, started 14 years ago, then Burnsville was our second, 13. And St. Louis Park in Miracle Mile Shopping Center was 12 years ago.
Okay. Are they all standalone retail locations?
No. Bloomington is standalone. St. Louis Park and Burnsville are both strip mall.
Are they part of, like, a place where you also make the product, or they just?
We don't manufacture a product. So we get product in bulk from several companies across the country. So our Bloomington location is where we have our food-safe room that we do the repackaging from. We distribute through Bloomington to the other two stores. So Edina would become our hub for distribution.
Got it.
Because of the size of it, because of the demand has grown so much.
If there's, have you, like you said, there's demand for your product and there's retail demand for it. Have you thought about trying to open a retail location at a place that, you know, expressly permits retail? Just like another retail location?
Yes, but our biggest need right now is the space. You know, the, the big warehouse piece because of our online business and our, we need that space for packaging. So any retail space we said we'd open at this point needed to have that warehouse aspect to it. Our, our space in Bloomington is a 5,000, oh no, 4,500 square foot building, which we've grown out of as of two years ago. So we do have that in Bloomington, but it's just not adequate.
Those are all my questions, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? Commissioner Felton, yeah?
So do you own the building now?
Edina, yes.
Okay. I saw the for sale sign still out there.
Oh, they took it down today.
So you have some plans for upkeep on the site? You said the building was little. Can you tell me about some of your plans for?
Yeah, since it's in that really bizarre, the earth is sinking field, kind of, that's new for us. We were trying to come up with creative ways to address that because filling it in isn't a solution, it's just nature, we can't fight it. So the things that we're going to do to update the building are make it our own by using materials that will enhance the whole vibe of the building and bring it more up-to-date in a creative way. We actually are not just striping our parking lot, we're having the whole thing replaced because it's in rough, rough shape. I mean, everything's in rough shape on that property. The landscaping we want to bring to the next level with removing the keystone retaining wall and putting in boulder wall, just bringing the whole vibe up to, up to date and more of an interesting curb appeal too, so that people, when they drive by, it fits Edina more. It was a school before and they, I think they just let the property, maybe they just didn't have the funds, but there's a lot of pieces that need to be fixed. And we've been in for, in the building for two weeks now, and we've already made many improvements inside, and then we'll work our way outside.
Yeah, I noticed that I did, I drove that lot and, and saw the, the drainage event out back because of its small plan, I'm sure, Pete, which is why it's... And so is, is the city kind of working with you? And that's the building department question, I'm sure they are. So, and I guess part of my concern was some of the settling in the building and the kindergarten next door, and then the interaction between, well, not kindergarten, pre-K and the private kindergarten next door and some of the interaction, because I'm sure it's going to be an attraction. People, families pull in, they park, and they drop their kids off. And I noticed that the loading dock, a loading dock was on that east side.
Yeah, that, that's a drive-in door. Actually, the loading docks are on the opposite side.
So you're not going to use that?
We won't, the only time that that drive-in door would be used is an hour after they close, up to an hour before they close. We would never interfere with that parking lot.
We actually can't because it's, those two buildings, the Gardner School and this building we're in, were owned by the same company at one point. When the Gardner School building was sold, they didn't work out an easement for the door that you're just talking about, which is a problem for us.
Okay.
So what we're doing is coming up with an agreement, because we don't want anything coming in that door, even just a regular vehicle during the school hours. So that's something we're in, working on an agreement with Gardner School. So that door almost will never be used except in the evening and on weekends.
Okay, good. Thank you for working with the.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, and that, that school is very busy. We've been there and watched what happens. So for us too, it's just not worth it. That's why all of our activity happens on the other side of the building.
And then how would people, they'd enter your building on the front, they'd park on the side and enter through the front?
Yes.
So you're going to work on a accessible route?
It, it actually is accessible now, it just needs to be, again, addressed because the concrete's a little off and there's things that we are actually working on.
Okay. Good, I think that's it. And I, and I'm glad you're working with a Gardner School.
Yeah, yeah. It's a busy place.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Commissioner Day.
All right. So, so you mentioned that this is, right, you consider this as a retail space because you wanted the warehouse element, you know, as, as your demand grows and whatnot. But there's nothing precluding you from using this as a warehouse just to serve your other retail spaces, right? So if you didn't have a retail in this site, you could still use it as a warehouse to serve your other sites just as easily, right?
Yes. It's the same.
Were you aware of this variance when you bought the site? Or this ordinance, sorry, not variance, ordinance?
Well, when we called the city, when I called the city, we got information that was not accurate. Because before we put a bid in on the building, we wanted to know if we could have retail. So I called the city to make sure we could. The information I got at the time said we could have a retail space as long as it occupied less than 10% of the building. 21,000 square feet, 1,000 square feet is no problem. I called again and this time had Amy on the phone because I'm like, I want to make sure that this is, I'm getting the right information. Yes, that was in fact the same information. It was consistent. We went ahead, had all the inspections done, hired the lawyers, did all the things. We really wanted this building. Great. It was icing on the cake that we could have the retail shop. That was great. Submitted, our lawyers submitted the letter, a title, the title company submitted to the city for the zoning letter. I'm sorry, there's a lot of terms that I don't understand. I'm the designer, so.
So Title requested the zoning letter back in April, but did not receive the actual zoning letter until June 5th, two days prior to our closing. And that was when we were notified that we could not have retail if our building was less than 40,000 square feet. So we were already way too far into the transaction to turn back. So then that's when we called the city and started talking to the planning commission.
And that's when the variance option came up, that we could come before you guys and present and see if we could still swing the retail.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Smith?
Great. No, I think Commissioner Day was going along the same path I wanted to go along. Just curious on, what is the zoning for St. Louis Park, Bloomington and the Burnsville area?
I'm not totally sure about St. Louis Park. I'm going to assume it's retail because we're in a strip mall. That's all retail. Bloomington, I think, is industrial retail, if I'm not mistaken. And Burnsville, I'm going to assume is also retail because it's in a strip mall with hair salon and a restaurant and.
Okay. Sorry. No, I think, I think you answered it. You know, in the comment section, I'll talk a bit more, but, you know, you got wrong information, right?
That's, that's correct. We weren't, I didn't really want to focus on that part, but yes, we did.
Yes.
We were misled. And the unfortunate part is it was so late in the game. I mean, we were two days before closing and we hadn't heard from the city in seven weeks. So we were in a tough spot. You know, we like to charge forward with things and we did need the warehouse. So it was, you know, we added it up and figured, yes, we still want to move forward with our plan, but it wasn't, it wasn't the plan we had originally planned on.
Okay. I guess this, this other question is for maybe Louis Addison. If they wanted to have like a food truck in, on that property that sold those ice creams, is that an accessory use permitted?
Not permitted. No, I'm deferring to Director Tia here.
No, the only instance where a food truck would be allowed would be associated with a taproom or on public property. You know, if there's an event in the park, they could bring in a food truck to serve the event that's going on. Same with someone at a residential home to serve a specific party. But to bring in a food truck there would not be allowed.
Gotcha. Thank you. That's it.
One more question. It's all good?
Just around the, I guess this is for the city, just because I want to clarify this. So I, I know that an error by city staff doesn't mean that we can just, we're just going to grant a variance because the city didn't make an error. But do we have, not that I don't trust you or take your word for it, but is there any record of, of the city saying, telling their company that they would have, be able to have retail and later backtracking on that?
I was the one that gave them the news that it didn't conform to, to city code. I don't know the, the back dates, how long that took place. But it was, I had that conversation with them that to let them know before they closed on the property, this use is not allowed. There's a couple of paths forward, no guarantee, the variance being the pass, path that was selected.
And as you mentioned, unfortunately, staff error doesn't obligate us or anyone else to make the decision. Are we good on questions? Can we open this to public hearing? Thank you. I'm going to speed this right along. This is a public hearing. So anyone who is here that would like to speak, please come up to the podium. You have three minutes when the green light starts. State your full name and address, as you well know. Go.
Janey Weston, 6136 Brookview Avenue. I bike the nine mile creek trail through the park. Fred Richards, I would be stopping by all the time. This, if you can figure out a way to make this work, this would be marvelous. But to safely get across 77th, that is important. So I'm excited about this, but please figure something out that, that fits zoning and code and all that stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. All right. Yeah. So, yeah, don't drool and drive or whatever the thing said. Don't, yeah, okay. So is, is anyone, so I guess, again, for people tuning in, I'll have to repeat this. Please call 786-496-5601, hopefully on the screen. Enter conference PIN 6960282 pound and press star one to jump into the queue. We'll give it a minute to see if anyone joins. Is there anyone in it now?
We do have someone in the queue, but they have not indicated that they want to speak. So if they would like to speak now, please press star one and introduce your name and your address and the operator will unmute your line.
Thank you.
I think it's been a minute and they have not indicated that they want to speak. So I think we're safe to proceed. Thank you.
We have a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, quickly say aye.
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 Public hearing is closed. Take it back to the planning commission to discuss, deliberate. Commissioner Smith?
I could get the ball rolling here. This one is a tough one. And I say it's a tough one because the bottom line is, the, the ordinance is really clear that this is a no. But, you know, it does point to that we should work on this ordinance to make it more business friendly and to allow this type of retail. And the other ones that slipped under the radar to be good to go. I don't know how the other ones got through, right? That is a thing that we have to look at. The other thing you have to look at is this developer got wrong information that, which makes this torn for me because I could say, well, they got wrong information. Let's grant this to cover that wrong information and then go back and try to fix the ordinance, like, you know, the chicken or the egg situation. But I would not be in favor of granting this. And I'd be more in favor of taking this ordinance or work plan, getting that corrected than having the developer come back and reapply, I guess, and get it going. It was like a chicken or the egg kind of situation, right? And I think getting the ordinance right is what we have to do. I was looking and, and like trying to understand if there's any kind of financial burden or stress that this developer would be under in this time period. It seems like you would just use this new location as a warehouse distribution site and maybe hold off on building the retail portion of it until we get the ordinance right. So from my perspective, I think the right thing to do is to get the ordinance right. So that's really clear and crystal clear that this is allowed. And then this developer could come back and request it. And that's kind of my position on it.
I'm going to quickly jump in. I, I have a case that we could support it. I'm just going to say it and then see what others think. So as, as we read it, there's three conditions that don't comply based off of, you know, the, the city code, right? It's less than 40,000 square feet. It has direct access to the retail component from the exterior. That's what those other mentioned things might not have that component. And they might be, be big enough where they do comply to this. So it has direct access. And then one part of it is it has no signs or displays relative to it visible from the outside of the principal building. So that doesn't, I mean, from their signage, they're advertising their company. It doesn't say shop or something. So it has ambiguity that we could argue either way of, right?
Yeah, they could have that same signage whether there's retail or not.
Correct. So that, so that to me doesn't apply. So as I look through the three conditions we need to support, the third one, I think we all agree will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. I think we can agree this enhances that. Two is the biggest struggle for me is there are circumstances that are unique to the property, not common to every similar zone property that are not self-created. So I guess the one part that I could get behind is the circumstances that are, that are unique to the property is the size of the building. So on this property, you could have a building that is, that is in compliance for size. So this is unique. It's not common to every similarly zoned property, every being the key word. And it's not self-created. The first one is relieve practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use from complying. And that first sentence always gets me. We're not, we're not entitled or they're not required to show that the land cannot be put to reasonable use, any reasonable use without the variance. They don't, they don't need to show that. And then the practical difficulties in complying with the code can include functional and aesthetic concerns. To me, these are all functional concerns. They want a direct access door. If it were 40,000 square feet, they could have a door into their office space and then a door into this retail space and they're fine. They could have signs in the same area. So to me, it's this argument of functional and aesthetic concerns that we're helping relieve those practical difficulties for. So I don't know. I see there's a case to support it and the, the ordinance probably does exist for other reasons and hesitation to grant it without fully considering the laws, maybe setting a precedent that we're unaware of. But I, I can't think of one. And it sounds like the precedent that we're setting is we should change the law. So I don't know. I can get behind it for those reasons. Commissioner Padilla?
I support this variance and I do so because I think the point of zoning is not to infringe on the industri, of this particular zoning is not to infringe on the industrial activity, which this does not. Avoiding the necessity of a variance would impose a ridiculous amount of work. So I think that takes it, you know, beyond kind of the, the functional piece. I understand that it isn't in compliance with the letter of the law, but I think this qualifies as a de minimis exception. Because, you know, one of the reasons that it's outside the law is because of the square footage. So I would consider this to be, as I said, a de minimis exception. And I do actually think that it would alter the character of the neighborhood in a good way. And I think it would be a very positive addition to the neighborhood, particularly since we're building residential, you know, right across the street. And then we do have the complication with the, the crosswalk. But basically, I think this is a great thing for the area and a great thing for the neighborhood. So I think, I take exception to the fact that it doesn't alter the neighborhood. And I don't think that, I think we need to have flexibility in everything that we're looking at, even though we, we are, you know, tied to carrying out all the laws. I think we also can't let something that's good for the community and good for the neighborhood get tripped up by what in this case is a, a law that doesn't apply exactly or applies poorly to this situation. So, and I agree that we should change it in the future, but we shouldn't let the fact that we all recognize this is not applicable in this case or, or bad law to get in the way of, you know, a business that we'd like to see in the neighborhood, that we'd like to, to welcome into the neighborhood. So I support it. I think part of the practical difficulty is there's an easement on the back 25% of this property for this drainage. They can't put a 40,000 square foot building on this. And it's also, there's work that's needed on this building and they've got to do some investment on it. The site has settled. So, and that's not the reason for the variance, but I think there's some practical difficulties about the size of the building. And I appreciate them taking on this building and, and doing some work on it and fixing it up.
All right, looking this way. Commissioner Strauss?
Yeah, I, I support this variance. It's, I think the key to me was Mr. Lewis, you know, said that, that the staff found this granting a variance a way forward. And I think that's, that, that makes sense to me. And it, I do agree that we need to change and, and address that issue. But I think that, that the fact that staff found this to be a reasonable or, you know, a path forward, I think that's, I'm fine with that.
Commissioner Borstein?
My turn? Yeah, I think this is clearly not one that a variance can be granted for. Sorry, guys. It's, it's actually a good test of like, what principles are we applying? Because, you know, some people just want chocolate in the neighborhood. Other people just think it would be good for the neighborhood. I agree. Like, great, irrelevant to the question in front of us. And other people think the law is unfair, kind of agree, also irrelevant. We shouldn't let the law get in the way of what we want to do. That's opposite of what we're supposed to be doing. So it, it tests like exactly what we were talking about in some of our training sessions. You know, can you make, and I'm very sympathetic, by the way, to your situation, especially if you thought you were going to be able to do one thing and, and, you know, you found out, it sounds like before you closed, but close to that time that the law didn't permit this use. But if you grant a variance in this situation without being articulate, being able to articulate, which I haven't heard anybody, Jimmy tried to do it, but I haven't heard anybody else, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but I haven't heard anybody else say what the actual practical difficulty was or what the circumstances unique to the property were, really in a clear way. And if we can't really clearly, I mean, we give people that hard time over a foot from someone else's property line. And this one's 20... And this one's 20,000 feet smaller than the minimum size that the building would need to be to even potentially qualify for a retail use, which by the way, would need to be an interior use. Maybe it's bad law, like, yeah. But I mean, just look at, just look at the language of the statute that we are stuck with right now. Within buildings having, comprising not less than 40,000 square feet. Okay? So if your building's more than 40,000 square feet, then you can have a retail use that is interior only. That means that if your building is this size, 20,000, half the size we're even talking about, no retail, period. So like, this is what, I just from, as a lawyer, I'm struggling with the express language of the statute with someone conceived of it sometime and decided that they didn't want any retail of this type in this area. We might think that that's a bad idea and bad for the neighborhood and it's going to take a chocolate shop away for maybe a short period of time until this can be changed. But like, I just don't think that we can articulate that the facts support granting an exceptional law in a way that's like defensible and then, well, what happens the next time someone comes around and says, I want to do some other type of retail in some other area that's clearly prohibited, just if you like, if you want it, they get a variance? I mean, that's where I feel like we're kind of at with our discussion. I agree with all the sentiments, like the feelings that people have about why this would be good, but I really do think that we need to deny this now because we're a judicial body and, and there's not a sufficient factual showing that an exception to the law is warranted. And by the way, you know, the applicant's still going to be able to use the property to do everything that they wanted to do with it to begin with. They're going to be able to distribute their property or their product to other retail locations. There are other retail locations available in the metro area where they could open another retail shop, like the other three that they already have opened in retail area, retail zoned areas. So I don't think that we're really losing. And, and yeah, if we want to revisit the way that these properties in this area are zoned, as this area changes, as amenities like Fred Richards come in and we start thinking about how can we make the properties in this area serve the community better, let's do it. But anyway, sorry for the, but it may seem like an insignificant question about a chocolate shop, but it actually is kind of a very direct test of our ability to like separate feelings from facts and apply the law to the facts and reach the decision that kind of, in my view, like the law sort of just requires. Like, I don't actually think we have discretion on this one. So for that reason, I'm going to vote against it. And I'm very much open to, like, and sympathetic to finding a way to, you know, make this strange looking law maybe a little bit more flexible so that uses can kind of come into this area in the future. Thanks.
Commissioner Day.
So I know this answer won't give me any free chocolate in the future, but I have a tendency to agree. I mean, you summed up what I, my initial thoughts when I was reading through this proposal last night, and I struggled so much with this, the second piece of the variance request, about the extraordinary circumstances and, you know, compare it to a residential home that was built before we had setback requirements and then all of a sudden a setback requirement was put in and they, well, now I'm kind of trapped, right? What do I do? Here, the ordinance is known. City staff error again does not make it our, you know, prerogative to say, okay, well, city made a mistake, so now we're going to grant you this variance. It was pretty clear in black and white that if you don't have a 40,000 square foot building that you're not supposed to have retail, and again, not supposed to be exterior. It's like you said, I struggle with articulating what is the extraordinary circumstances that prohibit, you know, that would allow us to say, yeah, this is acceptable use variance or, I just really get stuck on that too. And you articulated more so than I can right now, but that's really where I got hung up on. So I would tend to agree with that and go the same way.
Oh, turning left again, playing tennis. Yeah, Commissioner Miranda.
I have two questions, one for the applicant and one for Carrie. For the applicant, so do you have a schedule, if this, if this were passed, and I'm not anyway saying it is, but if it were passed, do you have a schedule for when it would be opening day?
If it was granted, we would hope for a September, early September, mid-September opening.
Okay, that's all you know. Thank you. And then is there anything, if they built out the shop in front, could they do that? Is there any other zoning requirement that they would be violating? If they didn't sell anything, if they just built it, could they do that?
They could.
Okay. So then the question becomes, do they, do we have time between now and September for the city council to pass, you know, an amendment to this thing? I mean, basically, or, or have them delay it until it's passed and then they just open up the shop or whatever?
Yeah, realistically, you know, with the month notice, posting on Better Together, Council Two meetings, probably looking closer to November, December.
Okay.
Commissioner Felt.
I've applied for a few variances in the past, I mean, just for residential, but I think we're getting, practical does not mean extraordinary. Practical difficulties is a very different meaning to me than, because one of the reasons you apply for variance is because you can't, for the reasons of the applicant, you do not want to abide by the zoning. There's some reason that you want to seek the variance. And especially in residential, they are aesthetic reasons. I've asked for a larger front porch because aesthetically it looked better on the house. Well, that's not an extraordinary reason. It's a practical reason. It was granted. It's a beautiful house. Everybody loves it in the neighborhood. So we do these for residences all, all the time. So I'm agreeing with Commissioner Bennett, Chair Bennett, on the flexibility. I think a couple of you talked about flexibility. So I think there, I think there are practical reasons. I think they've, they've bought this building, they're trying to fix it up. You know, can they put the, fix up the exterior and kind of prep it for later on? I mean, that's certainly a possibility, but I, I think there are practical difficulties that have occurred because of this. And I think there are practical difficulties on this site for them to do what they want. And, you know, I appreciate them buying this building and, and kind of fixing some of that settling. There's some space underneath that building, which makes me nervous next to that, that pre-K. So I appreciate what they're doing to fix this up.
Okay, last comment from me and then I'm done. You got it. Just really, like, again, this is not a passion project of mine. It's just really not. I'm just trying to be consistent. I just keep listening, guys, I keep listening. And like the practical difficulty and the unique circumstance that I'm hearing articulated is the law that expressly prohibits this, this use. That's not, that's not what a practical difficulty or unique, it's nothing inherent in the property. Somebody, it's, it's some grandfathered in structure or something that was sitting too far to one side or the other. It's not, that's not what it is. The difficulty that is the applicant's running into is the express and unambiguous language of the ordinance, which forbids in multiple ways what they're, what they want to do. That's the difficulty. And can you imagine if that was the standard? There'd be, there'd be a variance granted every time you wanted a variance because the law would prohibit what you're trying to do. It's circularly self-defeating. The difficulty is the law that says you can't do it. It's the only difficulty they've run into. You know, so there's no, there's a legal difficulty. There's not a factual, factual state of play that's difficult, in my opinion. And I just think we've got to be a little bit consistent with how we apply these things to these. I love how you articulate things. I attempted to, but I'm no lawyer. I, I feel good with the practical difficulty because it's, it's for complying, it's a practical difficulty to comply with the code and practical difficulties can include aesthetic and functional concerns. So a functional concern is a warranted practical difficulty. So to me, a direct access to the exterior, to the interior is a functional concern. Same with signage. The size of the building, again, I would say that's the greatest struggle for me. However, it is unique to the property because you, you physically could build a building of that size. There could have been a building of that size on this property. But there are circumstances unique to the property, not the building. So they're two separate things in my mind. So building in this property could comply if there wasn't that unique circumstance at the south part of the lot. They could have built a bigger building back then that was 40,000 square feet. So property and building, to me, are separate conditions. So that's how, at least I justify it myself. That's, that's good. I don't think, I'm going to persuade you, Jimmy, and you're obviously not going to persuade me on this one. I just wanted to try to help parse out so everybody can make their own independent judgment and think, is there a factual reason for this or do we, okay, just, that's it. We don't have to belabor it. Everybody's intelligent here. You can make your own informed decision, but I, I do think this one was a good, good example of one, that you can kind of get to maybe, maybe not the correct decision because you want to grant, you want to give them what they want and, you know, for, because it makes, you want the chocolate shop in the neighborhood. So, yeah. Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, I'm not going to be as articulate as Bornstein here, but 100% agree with him. There is no practical difficulty here. It's not allowed. It's practical difficult because they want to put an ice cream shop in a place where it's, where retail is not allowed if it's a building. We can't say that because they bought a building that's small makes it a practical difficulty. That's, that doesn't make any sense at all. I think this is kind of the principal issue that we, we'll run into in the next meeting, which calls the issues with PCD and that kind of stuff, that now forces us to now revisit ordinance, right? Because we didn't do it right the first time. And it also ties into the whole idea of the Cahill district too, where we were having folks bringing in businesses encroaching into a planned industrial space, which forced the whole Cahill plan to kick off, to start, you know, cutting things up and zoning it, re-zoning it. I think we have to be very careful with how we interpret what the law says and when requests come, right? I don't know how this came on our plate, but it seems like it's, it's a way to trigger a response to how do we update the ordinance? I don't think we should be granting a variance because we like ice cream. You know, it could be any other business, right? So I think this is a, you know, again, Commissioner Bornstein articulated very well. I think it really tests us on how we think about these things. So, yeah, I, I still hold my position on this one.
Well, welcome a motion either way, and we should probably do a roll call vote.
We should motion in the affirmative. Being, you can vote yes or no, but you always motion in the affirmative. And if you're against it.
You don't have to necessarily. Someone could move to deny, so. Okay, I'll move to deny. Has not supported by any findings of fact, prohibited by the law.
He hasn't done his training.
I second.
All right, we'll do a roll, roll call vote. And a reminder, an "aye" in support will effectively deny this. So an "aye" is essentially a denial. Nay is you disagree with the denial.
I think this is what we have to avoid.
Well, no, anyone can motion approval or denial, so I guess with that roll call.
Commissioner Felt.
I have a question, so. No, I don't. I vote nay.
Commissioner Miranda.
Nay.
Commissioner Padilla.
Nay.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss.
Nay.
Commissioner Bornstein.
Aye.
Chair Bennett.
Nay.
Five to three.
So that motion does not carry. So do we have another motion? We don't, we don't need to, but we, I'm going to open it to that.
Okay, I motion to approve the variance to allow for retail accessory uses exceeding 10% of the gross floor area with an existing building with less than 40,000 square feet of office space. And that is accessible from the exterior of the building.
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote again. And again, aye is in support of this motion to support, nay denies that.
Commissioner Felt.
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda.
Aye.
Commissioner Padilla.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Nay.
Commissioner Day.
Nay.
Commissioner Strauss.
Aye.
Commissioner Bornstein.
Nay.
Chair Bennett.
Aye.
Five to three.
Motion carries. Congratulations. Good luck. Chocolate.
I think we, I think we need a mixed chocolate zone.
That was great deliberation. Thank you, everyone, seriously, though. All right, for our third and final public hearing, turn over to Planner Teague.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Our last item this evening is a zoning ordinance amendment. This comes to us based on a recommendation from the city attorney so we can clarify conflicting sections of the zoning ordinance in regard to multi-residential housing in the PCD I and PCD II districts. So the language on the screen here, this is the conflicting regulation. Looking to the right side of the screen, Section 36612 lists conditionally permitted uses in the PCD district. Multi-residential use is listed as a conditionally permitted use. Multi-residential use means double dwelling units, residential townhomes, residential buildings containing six or fewer dwelling units, and residential buildings. So that could even mean a single family home. Residential building is defined simply as a building used for residential purposes or residential occupancy. These types of structures don't typically have commercial uses on the first floor or basement. So using that provision of the code, the city has approved a couple of, of projects zoned PCD I under a conditional use permit. That's the Dyna Flats and the View 44. We also have another section of the code on the left side of the screen, 36-618, number 18, that states no part of any dwelling unit shall be located in the basement or first floor of a building in the PCD I or PCD II district. So the goal of this ordinance is to clarify the ordinance one way or the other. So before I get into that, just quickly to show you where the PCD I and PCD II zoning districts are located, primarily in our smaller commercial nodes. 44th and France, 50th and France, the Grand View District, there's the one property out on London Dairy and 169, the 70th and Cahill area, the, the business node that we looked at earlier, 77th and Highway 100, and the Valley View and Wooddale area. So there's a couple of options for your consideration for the ordinance amendment. The staff recommendation is on the left side of the screen, and that's to follow the process that we've done in the past, that a multi-residential use would be a conditionally permitted use in the PCD I and II district. The language that was originally proposed, and by the way, the city attorney is, is on the line with us this, this evening, so if we have line with us this evening, so if we have any questions in that, I assume he's with us. If we have any questions for him, he can answer as well. The original language included planned unit development zoning, but that really doesn't apply in this PCD I or II district, so we would suggest that that be stricken from the language if that's the alternative that's selected here. So the code would read, unless otherwise authorized by conditional use permit, then no part of a dwelling unit shall be located in a basement or first story in the PCD I or II district. If the Planning Commission wants to recommend that we, for any PCD I or II district, if we want to mandate commercial on the first level and/or basement, that we amend the Section 36612 to state that more clearly. Because right now it just lists multi-residential uses, so we would add that line that says as long as no part of any dwelling unit be located in a basement or on the first story of a building. So those are the choices for the Planning Commission to consider. Just want to touch on some of the language quickly. Sorry, it's late, but within our small area plans, that talks about freestanding multi-residential uses. So starting with the Valley View and Wooddale small area plan, two of the guiding principles there support standalone multi-residential uses. It states sites should be allowed to transition to housing from business use in response to changing market demands. Graceful, the second, graceful transitions should be maintained from more active areas to quieter neighborhood streets immediately beyond the node. Generally, lower-density multi-residential uses provide a more graceful transition to single-family homes than commercial land uses. So that's on the edges of those commercial nodes as commercial in the center and then expanding out. And I've got some pictures that can show that and a few slides. The Valley View-Wooddale area also specifically mentions sites to allow existing land uses to evolve in response to the market. It states that the commercial site north of Valley View Road in Oaklawn may evolve to housing. And also, there's a graphic within the plan that talks about that Burley site. You may recall that was part of the Edina flats and the site plan changed to allow row houses to duplexes essentially. This is the vision that was just an example of a potential housing that could be located on that site. While the proposal does not look specifically like that, this is an all standalone multi-residential rendering. The 50th and France small area plan. So what's on the screen here in the lower right corner is the conceptual development plan for 50th and France. And note that the yellow areas are residential development, so this would be anticipated for standalone. The red areas indicated for mixed-use development. The 44th and France small area plan. One of the guiding principles is that housing should be provided in the study area to ensure choices for existing and future neighborhood residents. New types of housing may be provided, including multifamily dwellings, in mixed-use buildings with residential uses above ground-level commercial or office space, or additional types of housing, such as courtyard housing, townhomes, and live-work housing. Couple of renderings from that plan include examples of what that housing might look like, and you can see there's no commercial associated with those renderings. And again, the idea here in this conceptual plan has that standalone multi-residential on the edge of the node. Also, the 70th and Cahill small area plan. The general description talks about small to moderate-scale commercial, residential, or mixed-use buildings. And again, some of the renderings from that plan indicate standalone housing as well. So again, Planning Commission has a couple of options before you this evening, and with that, I can stand for any questions you might have. And again, the city attorney is with us as well.
Thank you for standing for questions. Do we have any?
Commissioner Smith?
Really fun night we're having. Question on, if we go at option two, where as long as no part of any dwelling be located on the basement or on the first story of the building, subject to the following, for PCD I and PCD II, if that locks in, what opportunity is there to grant variance for, you know, housing on the first two levels?
Yep, that would be the path if we choose that language on the right. Again, we'd probably run into some of the same discussions we just had with the last project, but there is some support in the comprehensive plan for standalone multifamily, so it can be on a case-by-case basis, but that would be the path.
So the conditional use permit would just give us the option, right, of essentially allowing dwelling on the basement or first story if we chose that language instead?
Yep. Now, you can place certain conditions on a conditional use permit. So, you know, again, it's looking at it on a case-by-case basis. Maybe we look at the comprehensive plan and some of those concept plans that show we want this to be mixed use, and we want to, you could add a condition to that conditional use permit that says the first floor has to have commercial. So there's some wiggle room there as well.
Okay, so, yeah. Option A gives us maximum flexibility. Option B is more restrictive, that we wouldn't be able to change really, unless we grant these variances and have a conversation.
Right.
Okay, interesting. All right, thank you.
I had a question. So Kerry, can you explain? Just tell me if this is right, if I kind of have this straight. Wouldn't a multi-residential project that contained dwelling units always need to receive a conditional use permit?
Correct.
In order to be permitted in a PCD I or II?
That's correct.
Yeah. And so like another way of saying that is, like, is there, if I were to say, is there any type of multi-residential project comprised of dwelling units that could be built in a PCD I or II without a conditional use permit? The answer would be no, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So here's, well, a concern I have. If you look at, maybe you can react to this, or whatever, but if you look at the language, are we calling it option A, Quincy? Is that, is that, okay. Look at the language that staff is proposing to resolve this tension. It says, unless otherwise authorized by a conditional use permit, no part of any dwelling unit shall be located in the basement. Well, any dwelling unit to be built is going to have to be authorized by a conditional use permit. So when that, just so you guys know, when that language goes into this part of the ordinance that exists, and someone wrote this prohibition in there for a reason, and I think I can get into why later, because we were trying to preserve the commercial nature of commercial districts, not have them turn into six-story apartment buildings with nothing commercial on the ground floor. This, if we went with option A, it would completely wipe away any force of the language that's still like there after that comma. The language would become meaningless because it would never apply at any project ever again. Any multi-residential unit that was ever built would have received a conditional use permit, exempting it from the restriction of the second part of the sentence. Does that make sense? So, anyway, I just wanted to confirm that my understanding of that was right. We can get into a discussion about it later, about why maybe I think the second option actually protects the commercial nature of the districts that we care about and still gives us the flexibility to make exceptions. But this, like, looks like this basically kind of takes this language, you might as well, am I reading this as basically this just deletes this language out of the code for a multi-residential project? And maybe the city attorney could weigh in on why even put it in unless otherwise permitted and then state and express prohibition when that prohibition's basically being deleted? It will never apply if this language is adopted. It will never apply to a multi-residential project because that project will have always been given the exception that takes it out, outside the force of that language. That's what I wanted to make sure I understood.
Yep, unless we make a finding that it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan, that we were looking for mixed use in a certain area, and then you could put a condition on that conditional use permit that says the first floor has to have commercial.
If other people have questions, but this actually is an important issue, and it's complicated, and we can maybe, I think a productive discussion would be helpful even though it's late. It actually is very important because it affects commercial nodes that we all care very much about and are very unique to the city, and it affects the commercial nature of them and whether they can be protected. And so we should talk about it, but I did want to kind of clarify like the effect that the language would have.
You also had a question about multi-residential through email. I don't know if that's distributed or disseminated, but if maybe you could speak to, you know, the different terminology.
Yeah, I sent an email to staff, and I just wanted to know where the definition of multi-residential came from, just because I didn't see a site for it. And then staff provided it. It came from the definitions section of the code that we're looking at. And so, I mean, to the extent of the record, it's not clear it did come from that. But that showed, at least in my view, was that there's tension between one expressed part of the code and then another, and there's language that conflicts. And what we're here, I think, sitting here trying to figure out tonight is, you know, do we lean more towards one? Well, basically, do we delete one? Do we delete one part of the code from it, from the existence? Or do we, how do we resolve the tension? Is it in favor of no commercial on street level when there's a conditional use permit granted? Or is it in favor of still trying to protect that first level of commercial but giving us the flexibility to make exceptions? So, sorry if that's complicated.
I think you articulated it well again. Any other questions, or we can get into just discussion?
I'm just confused. No, I'm just confused. So, what, so this talks about multi-residential uses. I'm looking at the, yeah, the right-hand side here. And, you know, it talks about basically what sounds like missing-middle housing, and then it says, and residential buildings. Does that mean a single-family home?
It could, yes.
But could it mean an apartment too? What does residential building mean? Any building that's just residential?
Residential building is defined as a building used for residential purposes or residential occupancy. Yeah. So that could include a single-family home.
So multi-residential is anything other than a single-family home that somebody can live in?
I think it would include a single-family home. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So if you wanted to not, for example, if you wanted to buy, if you want to go to 44th and France, buy a single-story or two-story commercial building that has a business in it right now, if you're a developer and you wanted to knock it down, and there'd be other problems, but build a single-family home or like a condo or something, or a townhouse, where instead of having that business on that street in that commercial node, someone just walks into this, lives on the ground floor? You could do it, as long as you got a conditional use permit. There'd be nothing in the code prohibiting you from putting someone's house right on the street level, which seems ridiculous to me. Sorry if I'm, like, especially since we're, the nodes we're talking about here, we're talking about statutory language that conflicts and relates to nodes like 50th and France, 44th and France, other parts of the city that, near Vernon, that, you know, are commercial areas. And we're talking about, do we want to take, delete a provision of the code that is the only thing protecting the commercial nature of the first level in those areas? By the way, they're very small areas. And so we're talking about like hypothetical, I think, it was confusing to me, Lou, for a long time. I read this, this was like a circular pretzel, like, what is this? And like, it's like one of those drawings where you go around the stairs and you're always going up and down, then up. It was like that.
Do we have to grant a conditional use? We don't have to.
No, but, I mean, look, people, these bodies change. Actually, I think it's coming, the bigger context is that there's controversy about how liberally some of the, how easy it's been to get conditional uses. And so we're talking about like a real situation where, say, a developer bought up all of 44th and France, or a big chunk of 55th and France, they bought it for some, conditions changed economically. They wanted to tear down the existing commercial structures there and put up a six-story apartment building with residential on the ground floor. As long as they got a conditional use permit, if we went with option A here, they could build it. There'd be nothing in the code that says you can't put people's homes on the ground level. And that commercial area could just, like we were talking about protecting thing, could just turn into a residential area. And this is the only part of that code that's standing in the way of that right now. And there's a conflict. And so what we're, I think, trying to figure out is, we have to resolve, we want to resolve the conflict, but do we resolve it in favor of language that protects the first level and keeps it, say, basically you got to keep a commercial unless you get a variance? Or do we want to, you know, take that, get rid of it, and basically say, as long as you convince someone to give you a conditional use permit, you can buy up an entire commercial node in Edina and turn it into a seven-story apartment building with no business on the ground floor? That's what kind of got me when I was thinking about it. So I know it's late, but like, ask questions to Kerry, you know, to clarify, because the other direction, the other direction that I think that we can ask him about is the second option, where you basically say that you can build multi, PCD I and PCD II are for commercial only. And then there's this one provision that says you can build multi-residential if you want, but you can't put dwelling units on the ground floor. So like, you could build, you could build it, a residential structure, a structure where people live in, but you got to keep a space for commercial on the ground floor, and you can have people live above it. And that's what the alternate language that staff, so, sorry, but like, just, like, I'm going to stop talking. I've talked more tonight than I usually do. But like, ask questions to clarify these things, I think.
I think he just clarified it very well.
Yeah, and as you mentioned, I mean, examples of this have come up recently. I mean, we have someone sitting there that has brought attention to this too, that I think otherwise we hadn't considered beforehand of just the application of it, and the areas kind of jive with exception, but these examples kind of bring to light the potential.
Yep, we need to clarify those two sections.
All right. As we go down the line, we'll start here at Commissioner Smith.
You know, I probably just asked this question before. I just wanted to make sure that I totally get it. So with option A, even on the left side here of the screen, the conditional use, who applies the conditional use? If we had to apply a condition, we grant someone a conditional use permit, then we have to put a condition on it. We would apply that condition, right? The Planning Commission would.
You could, yep.
So we could say, yes, we grant you a conditional use permit with the condition that you put commercial on the first floor. So that's what we could do. It's an extra step, it's cumbersome, but we could do that, right?
It is, but I think to Commissioner Bornstein's point, if we went with option B, the starting point is you have to have commercial.
Totally get it. So then my next question is, what mechanism do we have, not that we would want this necessarily, but if it was a PCD I or PCD II, what is the actual mechanism if we wanted to have residential on the first floor? Or is that completely out of the question, never to happen? If we go with option B here, do you want to?
It would be the variance.
Yeah. Now, what does that variance mean? Like, do you ask for a variance and then we just vote on it like how we do?
Right, and they'd have to satisfy those three conditions.
Okay, gotcha. Last question. The reason why we're looking at option A here, is it because of the View 44 and the Edina flats kind of issue that was on Valley View? Was that really?
Yeah, so that's how the code had, that's how it's been interpreted in the past, that it is a conditionally permitted use. That's what the code says. You know, based on all those different types of uses that don't have first-floor residential. So, yeah, that option comes from that and those citations from the small area plans where we do reference. where we do reference standalone multi-residential uses.
Gotcha. Thank you, Carrie.
Commissioner Padilla.
Can you go back to the map that has the, yeah. So, is 54th and France on here? That, where, where, what is that? Is that, because we had talked about that as a node and potentially changing some of the uses up there, and I'm wondering.
Oh, yeah, there might be, it's.
How that would apply.
But that might be a PCD-1 right on the corner there. There's that little retail strip center.
Okay, that's only on the, is that only on the southwest corner?
Yes.
Okay. Because I'm just wondering how this would apply going forward as we develop more nodes, you know, potentially, you know, and we're talking about looking in the future, different areas of development and things like that. And I sort of understand how this is applied to what's, what's already there, but wondering in terms of its application in future development, so I guess I just.
Yeah, it's, it's only properties that are zoned PCD-1 and PCD-2.
So, the only other thing that's, that's not in a big red square is that one corner of 54th?
Right, correct.
Okay, thanks.
I'll update that graphic. Good catch.
Looking further left. Commissioner Miranda.
Yeah, so I mean, it sort of makes you wonder what, you know. So, we're basically comparing PCD to PRD, right? So, because PRD, it would be allowed to have residents on the first floor, but PCD would not. So, the idea is that PR, like, PRD is along Vernon, right? There's a bunch of PRDs along there, there's multi-story apartments along there, that blue area there, yeah. And, and just above 62 on the left side by 169. So, but generally, in our nodes, but those aren't really nodes, right? So, but in our nodes, we generally have PCD.
Correct.
So, so, yeah, it is sort of a nodal problem, or a nodal concern, that, you know, presumably in a node, you would want retail on the first floor, and that's kind of the whole point. So, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Felton.
My question is about timing, and it seems like a very complicated issue, and I've been asking, I've been having conversations with lots of friends and old city council, ex-city council people, and this one is hard for me to understand, so I'm, I'm wondering if, if, does this have to be voted on tonight?
I would recommend we vote on this tonight.
And is there a, is there a? We have to deliberate on it tonight?
Correct.
Is there some deadline or anything? I don't know if we're going to come to a resolution.
Yeah, there's not a deadline. There's, there's no, there's no pending development application.
Okay.
It's just we've got a conflicting code we need to resolve.
Okay, yeah, and I, and I think part of what I'm struggling with is, is I don't know if we've resolved it yet. I mean, it doesn't seem very clear, because I think, to your point, the part of the reason these nodes are so special to us is because there are these old buildings that have these charming shops on the main floor that we like to visit.
Well, I think that argument is what makes it clear, I guess, at least to me, because I mean, where we're starting is PCD-1, PCD-2, that hones in only in these nodes. That's it. That's pretty clear. That's a starting point. So, do we want to err on the side of protecting this? I would argue, yes. When you look at the pyramid of discretion, variances have less discretion, but still in that sum bucket, conditional use permits are easier to argue. So, I would, I would go to the denial side for what he mentioned, as well as it helps protect the character of those areas more than not. And to me, as he articulated, it became as simple as that.
Yeah, you can, you can look, I mean, you can look at, there's two provisions, and someone has read them to be in tension with each other, but you can also read them to be in harmony with each other in a certain type of way. Are we blending into discussion now? You know, do we need to close? Like, I don't want to, or is this okay?
Oh, yeah, I guess, yeah, I forgot it's a public hearing. We need to open it.
We can talk through it, but maybe, if we don't have questions, then we can talk through it.
Sure. Do we have any more questions for Carrie? Okay, seeing none, we are going to open it to a public hearing. Thank you for the reminder. So, first, we'll welcome anyone in the room who knows the rules. Seen you before, you know it. Name, address. You got three minutes when it turns green. Three minutes. Three minutes. Only three. Just a reminder. That's a big pamphlet, so.
Janie Weston, 6136 Brookview Avenue. Please don't dig this hole any deeper than it's already gotten to tonight. I was not happy to see that on page eight of the staff report, you were given two options to vote on tonight, to consider and vote on tonight. The legal notice for this public hearing regards only Section 36-618. It does not include 36-612. You may not even consider option B tonight, as far as the law goes for public hearings. So, take it off the books right now. I hope our lawyers, city lawyers, still listening here. Do you understand what I'm saying? I hope. Okay, so, take that off. This is only discussion of 36-618. Now, for 36-618, stating that you can use a conditional use, saying that conditional use allows the residential dwelling at basement and first-floor level, I gave you, all of you, the two pages of conditional uses that it refers to, 612, and nowhere does it allow basement and first-floor living. I hope you all read it many times. It took me a number of readings. The purpose of this, obviously, is for affordable housing to be considered seriously, to be put above commercial ground-floor buildings. Okay? Let's keep all this clear, because the consideration you're supposed to be discussing tonight goes nowhere. It absolutely goes nowhere. You cannot refer to conditional use, saying that it's allowed, when it does not allow it. Okay? This is, this is not ready to be voted on. There needs to be a much clearer understanding here, and it is not to be complicated by what all the small-area plans for other areas are supposed to be talking about. I'm just talking about what our code says and what it does not say that you can do. And it's late, and I knew this was going to be the last thing for the public hearings tonight, so you are not ready to vote on this. There needs to be a much better legal understanding of what our code says you can do and what you cannot do, what 618 refers you to with conditional use, and what the conditional use permitting does not say is allowed. Okay? I hope I'm making myself really clear here. This is not ready to be voted on. If you got any questions.
Loud and clear. Thank you.
I'm still here.
Open, thank you.
Yes.
Welcome. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this matter? Oh, look.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Steve Brown. I live at 5528 Halifax Lane, and I want to give you one other thing to be thinking about as you're deliberating on this issue. This issue, I think, relates directly to the proposed project at 5780 Lincoln Drive. Currently, I think it's zoned PCD-1. It is guided for office residential. If you made the decision based on PCD-1, you'd say there needs to be commercial in the bottom of this proposed building. It does not propose that, so we need to deny the application for this building. I don't think that's the correct interpretation. I don't think that's where you want to leave yourself. In general, the city tries to err in providing flexibility. If you believe that that building should be built, and the code is getting in your way in some way, you want to look for, is there, is there some flexibility permitted in the code? So, I would just ask you to figure out some way to ensure you don't put yourself into a trap or a hole you can't get yourself out of. So, look for flexibility. I agree with the point that was just made. This is not something that should be decided tonight. I think it's something you need to get more clarity on, and then make sure that you understand whether you're limiting yourself too much or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Open it up to the lines again, if someone's still tuning in or just tuned in. Call 786-496. Yeah, I don't see anyone else here in person. 5601, enter conference pin 6960282, pound. Press star one to jump in the queue. We're excited to hear your voice. Well, wait a minute.
Yes, we have one person in the queue right now. They have not indicated that they would like to speak, if they would like to speak. Oh, looks like they just indicated that they want to speak. Just a reminder to the speaker to please state your full name and address, and the operator will unmute you in a minute, in one second here.
Yes, hi, this is Barbara Hogenson, 5724 Duncan. And since you are a duty-shary body, and residents need to be able to count on zoning laws, and especially with PCD-1 and PCD-2, to preserve commercial is very important to residents, because that is the zoning that we're counting on. I'm asking the planning commission to reject any amendments that will not preserve the commercial nature of PCD-1 and PCD-2. Just as I understand it, that when, when you're approving these conditional use permits, you're going ahead and allowing all residential to be in areas where people were counting them to be PCD-1 or PCD-2. And basically, what ends up happening is developers are maxing the lot sizes out, and all the attention that was given to small-area plans, et cetera, are not being really adhered to, because if it's truly residential, shouldn't it be really treated as purely residential as a PRD-1 and a PRD-2? So, I just ask you to please respect and preserve the commercial nature of the zoning, because that's what residents are really counting on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else in the queue? It has been a minute.
No, there is not anyone else in the queue.
Motion to close, anyone?
Motion to close the public meeting.
Second, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
So, move public hearing is closed. Take it back for discussion, maybe clarification to Carrie about making a decision on these two, one versus the other. Can you make a distinction there, or?
Yeah, we, I can ask Dave to, well, correct me if I'm wrong, but being that we did not advertise for Section 36612, so the alternative B, I think she's right, we would need to notify that we're making a change to that section of the code. That's it, and to Mr. Brown's comment, that, that property on Lincoln Drive is zoned POD, so this one doesn't apply specifically to that site, so I just wanted to clarify that. What the planning commission could do tonight, from the discussion that I'm hearing, if you're leaning more toward that alternative B, you could recommend, you could deny or make a recommendation that you don't support the ordinance that's in front of you that was advertised as part of the public hearing, ask staff to go back, maybe we need to do a little more research, or whatever we need to do on that Section 36612. Post that, send out the notices as required. So, I think those are your two options. Am I right on that, Mr. Kendall, in regard to the notification?
Can you hear me, Carrie?
Yep.
I think you are right on that. If the public notice did not reference Section 36-618, I don't think the planning commission should vote on that section tonight. It sounds like maybe there's some consensus about what the planning commission is interested in doing, but staff could go back and clarify that for a future meeting, if that's the preference.
It wasn't advertised for 36612.
It was advertised for Section 36-618.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I flipped those. It should have been 618, not 612. If it was not advertised for 618, then I don't think the planning commission should approve amendment to that section tonight.
It's not quite midnight, you know, come on.
Well, I don't know that it makes sense to take this in piecemeal fashion. I mean, I think we could probably decide on 618 tonight. It was noticed properly, and we could talk about it, maybe, but it's, it's bound up in 612. It's, if you don't like 618, and there are reasons not to like it, including because it doesn't make sense the way it's written, you might as well delete entire Section 18, it does the same thing, then it makes logical sense to say, okay, if we don't resolve the tension in the ordinance that way, do we want to do it in the way that folks helpfully, staff sort of helpfully presented in 612? Or do we want to do it some other way, or not do it at all? But, does it really make sense to make one decision tonight, come back, talk about 612 another time? I mean, we should discuss that. It might make sense. I'm, I'm just getting the impression that folks are starting to realize that, A, this is complicated, B, it's confusing, C, it actually has tremendous consequences for, you know, the commercial nodes, because it could put a huge loophole in, in, in the city code through which, when we're all gone, after we're all gone, some, someone could buy those commercial properties and convince another body to grant a conditional use permit and turn them all into residential. I mean, that's kind of doomsday thinking, but it would be permissible. I mean, that's kind of doomsday thinking, but it would be permissible. And I don't think that, I'm just not sensing that people really want to go change the law to like make that path like even clearer for those areas right now. So I don't know. What do you all think? Like, it is late. It really does require thinking through, and I think on this one especially, like getting to a consensus as much as possible, like among this group, about like how to handle this issue.
Thoughts?
I think this is very complicated. I think it's very important. I think it's very late. And I don't think we should bifurcate it. And so I think we should defer decision. And I think it would be great if, when we do discuss it, if it would be possible for the city attorney to be present, that would be very helpful.
Commissioner Smith.
I'm generally in agreement with that approach. Just a question on 612. Is 612, and this might be for the city attorney, is 612 primarily directed towards affordable housing, or it just mentions affordable housing as a consideration? And it could be any kind of market-rate housing that this applies to?
I think I can take that one. It refers to multi-residential uses as a conditional use, but the affordable housing policy is also attached to it. So it's both.
So I guess I would add that I don't think it would apply exclusively to affordable housing, if that was the question. One other point I just wanted to mention was, with respect to 618, I do think, first of all, I think the presumption would be that if a CUP is issued, then it would, residential would be allowed on the first floor unless that CUP were written to prohibit residential on the first floor. So you're starting, you could still do an amendment to 618, which would potentially allow prohibition of residential on the first floor of the basement, but you'd have to write the CUP that way. So I think all the discussion has been correct, that if you want to preserve a presumption in favor of having no residential on the first floor basement, probably an amendment to 612 would be the preferable path. But this is an issue you can take up if you discuss this at a future meeting, but I just wanted to put that out there for your consideration when you take this up again.
Yeah, I'd say since these were both related, and they were kind of on the docket to make a decision on, but they weren't properly notified, we should just table the whole thing. Not just because it's late, it just seems inappropriate to make a decision on half of this one. They're related.
Is there some sort of like practical urgency behind this that, okay, then if there's not, you know, some other contextual reason why this was put on tonight, and like we're going to have some sort of problem if we don't? Okay, then I mean, I obviously agree with that.
So do we need a motion to basically postpone this, and a condition to postpone and recommend inclusion of a 612 consideration?
I think that would work, yes.
Sound good, everyone? Well, I'm not making... Can someone make the motion?
Yeah, I mean, I can try it.
Yeah.
Motion to postpone making decision on the proposed amendment to Section 36618. And to support re-noticing the proposed amendment to 36618, and the alternative proposed amendment to Section 36612. And then hearing both issues after they've been properly noticed.
Second.
Second. Double second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. That will be postponed, and...
Yeah, so what we'll do is, staff will work with the city attorney, come up with the language between those two sections, post it on Better Together, and then schedule the public hearings.
All right. Thank you. Resident feedback, that was critical. Commissioner Smith.
Director T, is there any other language that would be bundled up in this besides 618 and 612?
Not that I can think of. Those are the two conflicting sections.
Okay. Thank you.
Janie, if there's anything else, please let us know. Email, whatever works. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. And that concludes, finally, our public hearing portion of the meeting tonight. And on we are to Chair and member comments. There's five minutes allowed, so Commissioner Padilla.
So everybody has a postcard about Human Services that they got as part of their information for tonight. And I am the representative on the Human Services Task Force. So what we do, we are in the process of gathering, starting July 3rd, gathering, put out an RFP. The application opens July 3rd through August 14th. The City of Edina will enter into contract services based on competitive RFP to organizations that provide services for Edina residents that the city does not provide. So examples of that would be emergency shelter, long-term housing, rental assistance, youth housing, laundry services, counseling, programming for seniors and caregivers, transportation to grocery stores and doctor appointments. So an example of an organization that would provide that would be like Veep or something like that. So because Edina doesn't do that, they have a budget of $100,000 budget permitting that they grant to as many organizations as they believe qualifies over a two-year period. So this is just, the program is just starting. And the more information in terms of the person, and the phone number, and the website are all on here. So they are looking for a robust response to the, you know, in form of RFPs. So if anybody knows anybody, this is just for your own edification and to provide to your own sphere of influence and knowledge in terms of, so that they can get as many organizations as possible, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Commissioner Smith.
All right. Long night. General comment, I would say. I just want to give a shout out to teachers and educators in the City of Edina. I think they do a tremendous job educating our kids, keeping them safe, and making parents happy. This summer, my kids and a lot of kids in the city are going to Kids Club, which is great. I know last year, there were some challenges with staffing, a lot of teachers, you know, not being able to come during the summertime, not finding workers, et cetera. And this year, they did an amazing job getting the Kids Club program in full gear, and getting most kids who signed up to be a part of it, a part of it. And so I just want to really commend the school district, and the teachers and educators that take up that big challenge of watching our kids during the summertime period, so that's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Miranda.
I'd just like to briefly touch on the Cahill District Plan, where we had, you know, the separated zoning, and, you know, that we need all of those different zonings to get what the city wants, or whatever. And yet, here we are, looking at the chocolate shop, and we have, in a, we have a industrial use with a commercial use on it, and a residential use across the street. So here we have those three uses all on the same block, right across the street from each other. And there's also some concern that, you know, oh, who wants, you know, if you live in an apartment building, who wants your balcony facing, you know, industrial use? But again, we've got an apartment building across the, or a series of apartment buildings across the street from this industrial use. So I think it shows pretty clearly that we already have uses like that, and that there's little reason to restrict it into separate zones that way. Second thing is that the, in addition to the other scary things I mentioned about the climate, Canada has lost 3% of its tree canopy, or coverage, whatever, due to these fires that we've been having, that we've been getting all the smoke from and everything. So it's been a record, not only for us in terms of the number of days that we've had smoke, but it's also Canada's lost 3% of their tree coverage. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? I guess my, yeah? All right.
Okay, a few. First, I guess, I'm sure we'll talk about it and probably make it a work item in terms of, I think there's more discussion to be had about how do we implement these plans when we, right, Cahill, Grand View, et cetera? Like, how do we follow up on that? Right? I think there's a lot of discussion that needs to happen, yet I don't want to do it tonight. Just saying. I thought it was a very good point brought up, so I circled back to it to say, all right, this is something that we need to make sure we stay on top of, because it's a worthwhile activity. Because otherwise, like you said, stuff gets lost over five, 10, 15 years, and we start to build restaurants and stuff like that that maybe don't align with the plan. Two, I guess, in light of the chocolate shop ruling, right, I know last week, our last meeting, I mentioned that one thing that stuck out to me in the training was trying to separate ourselves from the emotion of the community versus the language and the ordinance. And I do think, as Will pointed out, that we, that was a good test tonight. And I'm not sure that if this storefront was selling lamps, that we might have been so enthusiastic about passing it. Right? It's great that we, chocolate, everybody's on board, everybody's very eager, but to me, I think, I don't know, I think emotions influence our decision a little bit, and I think we need to watch ourselves on that. And then, related to the chocolate thing, I had to add that it's in, because I think you misconstrued my comment there a little bit, in terms of backyard, your balcony. Your balcony facing a chocolate shop is very different than your balcony facing heavy trucks loading, a loading dock, right? That's not the same thing. And the concern in the feedback that was given by the survey in the small group study was that they would get complaints from residents about noise and stuff like that, right? If your balcony faces a loading dock that works 24/7, you'll probably complain about it a little bit more than seeing people selling chocolate out of their storefront. So that's not a comparable thing, so. That's it.
All right. In an effort to wrap up comments, my final one is, thank you all. I mean, this is one of the first marathon meetings in a while. We just broke midnight. That's a commitment, so I, for one, appreciate everyone's service to the city, especially in times like this, where you're sacrificing five hours of your free time to be awesome stewards to the city. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Great discussions tonight. I guess, turn it to city staff for comments.
Nothing for me tonight.
Great, that was quick. With that, I'll welcome a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is closed.